Everybody, it is eight thirty. We'll call this morning's meeting for the County Board for Tuesday, August tenth. First item is the, first we have the citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
We don't have an approval of the agenda on here, I think.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee.
Additional approval of the agenda.
Okay.
That meets my second.
Okay. All right, seeing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign, motion carried. Now we'll go to citizens to be heard. And I, we have people here that are on the agenda. Do we have anybody online?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So we will move on then to the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move, we approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ebinger and second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign, motion carried. Approval of minutes from July twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty one.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same, motion carried. This morning, we have a couple of presentations on external agencies budget requests, and our first one today is Liz, Liz Lynch with Executive Director with Lake Agassiz Regional Library.
Good morning.
Good morning. Just make sure you talk into that microphone there.
I just want to make sure all of you have a copy of the budget request, correct? And then also, I passed around a brochure of services and information. Did everyone get one of those as well?
Yes.
Great, okay. Well, good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to be here this morning to give you an update on services at Lake Agassiz Regional Library, and also to give you an update or to answer any questions you might have about the budget request for two thousand and twenty two. This is a big year for Lake Agassiz Regional Library as we celebrate our sixtieth year of library service around the region. I'm happy to say that our organization is as relevant today as it was forty and fifty and sixty years ago. We, as public libraries, are known for our ability to evolve and adapt, and while the services we're providing are certainly changing, our mission of connecting people with the information tools and resources they need to improve their quality of life still remains the same. So as we're celebrating our sixtieth year of library service, we're really using this time as an opportunity to take a close look at the wants and needs and expectations of our community members. We've conducted a number of needs assessments around our region this year, and we're really taking a close look at how our organization operates, and then we're really looking at how to determine the best path forward for Lake Agassiz Regional Library and how to really meet the needs of the people we serve. Over the past year or so, we've been the very fortunate recipients of COVID-related grants from the Department of Education and State Library Services, and this has been specifically, it's not for operating, it's specifically for technology and digital inclusion efforts. And with these grants, region-wide, we've been able to purchase all-new computers and software for public use. We've been able to purchase Wi-Fi hotspots, which are being checked out to customers around the region. They've been very popular. We've also been able to add funds to our ebook and e-audiobook collection, which was really a lifeline for many people around the region during the pandemic. We've seen a huge increase in use of these downloadable materials. Last year, we saw about a twenty-three, twenty-four percent increase in these resources, where you can just use your phone to download a book or an ebook, a movie, a television show, a magazine. And so that, the popularity of that is only going to increase. We were also able to better equip our book truck, which has been traveling around the city of Morehead, and then also to Dilworth with internet connectivity, so that not only can staff connect the internet while out helping customers around the city and around Clay County, but also citizens can connect to that internet access as well. And we've also been able to upgrade our Morehead meeting rooms, Morehead Public Library meeting rooms, with this virtual, online, hybrid meeting software as well, and we'll be bringing that to a couple of our other locations as well. And this funding from the Department of Education and State Library Services is a real gift for Lake Agassiz Regional Library, because it's really allowing us to set our organization up for success, and it's allowing us to give our customers the tools that they've been wanting. So we are very grateful for that funding. This past year has also been an excellent year for creating new partnerships and strengthening old partnerships, and right now, we are currently working closely with Career Force offices around the region. Career Force has been very generous in offering training to our staff regarding what they do and what they have to offer, because a big part of a librarian's job is to refer community members to Career Force. But also, this fall, Career Force will be offering Career Force classes in our locations around the region, so we're very excited about that. We also have been working with a couple of mental health centers that are actually providing, meeting with their clients one-on-one in a library setting, so we're excited about that. Also, a newer partnership is with Legal Aid of Minnesota, where Legal Aid of Minnesota has placed legal kiosks in six of our libraries around the region, including in Morehead. And these legal kiosks are computers, webcams, printers, and scanners in a private location, so that a community member can come in and use this equipment in a private location to connect with Legal Aid of Minnesota. So it's starting to take off in Morehead, for sure. Much of my time this past year has been spent preparing for and working through this past legislative session, and I come here every year and I tell you this story about how the Minnesota State Legislature has only given regional public library systems an increase once in twenty years. The last increase we have seen in the Minnesota State Legislature is, was in two thousand and eight. This past year was an interesting year, because, it was kind of exciting, because Senator Mark Johnson from Polk County, which is in our region, was the chief author of our bill, and he fought hard for public libraries and advocated for public libraries in the House. Representative Wolgemont from St. Cloud carried the bill, and this is the first time since two thousand and eight that we actually made it into the E-12 omnibus bill. At the very end, it was denied and it did not go through. So, but it's further than we've ever gotten before, so we will continue to fight for that funding in future, and for the next biennium as well. On a positive note, regional library systems did receive their full funding for legacy funding from the Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund. You're probably aware of this, maybe you are, maybe you aren't, but Commissioner Kaylee is the Lake Agassiz Regional Library Legacy Coordinator, and since the pandemic began, Commissioner Kaylee has done an amazing job of planning legacy programs, both online and in person, around our region, and even at the height of the pandemic, Commissioner Kaylee was planning virtual events, and during these virtual events, the people were attending from the comfort of their own homes, we were receiving phone calls and emails from people saying, "Thank you so much," and people were specifically even saying, "This is the first time during this pandemic that I have felt like I'm part of a community." So, nice job, Commissioner Kaylee, and she continues to offer great programs around our region as well. And just last Saturday, there was a concert at the Morehead Public Library parking lot, and there were over three hundred people in attendance at that concert, and it was so fun to walk around and mingle with all of the audience members, to hear how grateful they were for that program on such a beautiful night, but also to hear how grateful people are for their library services around the region. So, thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. Also, the last bit of legislative information I wanted to share is that, of course, we are thrilled that the legislature approved the local sales tax option for a new joint Morehead Library Community Center, so hopefully, when I come back in a year from now, I will have more information to share about that project. Does anyone have any questions at this point, before we jump into the budget, about any of the services that we're offering at Lake Agassiz?
Questions? Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Congratulations on your achievement with the legislature. That's always a huge hurdle. What are you, as you look forward, are you looking to expand services, and if so, would that mean expanded commitment from your partners?
Um, we are looking at, which partners, do you mean the signatories?
The financial partners.
Sure. We are not looking at adding any additional hours, or, we are just looking at maintaining current hours, and when we are adding new services, we're always looking, we're always evaluating services, so if we're adding something new, we might have to let something go. So we're pretty practical about, about services.
Right, and the only reason I ask is because we are, excuse me, because we are a partner just so we could help, you know, with future planning and budgeting for ourselves.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions? Okay, your budget.
So regarding the budget, you'll see that overall this year, the Lake Agassiz Regional Library Board decided to ask for a half a percent increase for two thousand and twenty-two. We usually ask for like a two percent increase, usually average, and the reason why we're asking for such a small amount is because during the pandemic, we did reduce hours in several locations that had multiple staff, when things were, when, when traffic was a little bit slower, and so we did have some, we furloughed a handful of employees, we had some retirements, and then also, we just had some resignations. So while in two thousand and twenty, we were planning on deficit spending, we actually ended up with quite a surplus. And so since we do have that surplus, in two thousand and twenty-two, we've decided to ask for a smaller amount. We'll still, we're still planned to deficit spend, but we have those reserves to cover the costs.
That was, one of my notes that I had on here was to ask you about the fund balance that you, it looks like you're using one hundred and forty-six thousand of fund balance to offset your revenues to balance your budget?
Correct.
And so that then, that comes from your revenues over expenditures from two thousand and twenty?
Yes.
Twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty.
Right, okay. And so, and I think, in the past, I know, I think Commissioner Mojo was asked this question. Where, where does your fund balance sit after this? Is it still, is it, is it in a good position, or?
Yes. We have six months of operating funds, the required amount of operating funds, and we are actually a little bit beyond that. We're always planning to deficit spend, and when we go through our budgeting process in May and June, we always have the two unknowns. We never know how much money we're actually going to receive from the state of Minnesota, and then also, we never know our healthcare costs, and so throughout the year, if there's a resignation or personnel, maybe somebody isn't taking health insurance or something, then we have been lucky so that we haven't been deficit spending quite as much as we had thought, so we are able to build our reserves a little bit.
So based on, based on your total, to have six months of expenditures, and on here you have, it's showing expenditures for two thousand and twenty-two of three point six million, so you, so roughly, you'd be saying you probably have about, at least, maybe a little over one point eight in your reserves?
Yeah, I, to be honest, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I-
Well, I'm just doing the math based on what you said in the past year, so.
Yes.
And then my other question was on your, on your salaries, I see that you have a four point two four percent increase. Does that include, it's just, you have just one item here, so I'm assuming that's all benefits to-
Yes.
-health insurance and everything?
Mm-hmm.
It's all part of that four point two four, okay?
Yep, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Correct.
And then one last question.
Yes.
I noticed on the front page here, well, Clay County funds the seven-county share. When I say Clay County, it's Clay County and the city of Morehead, about forty-one percent of the total expenditures. And, you know, as we go through and we ask different, and I'm going to ask the question to Joe in a little while here, too, in terms of, you know, for our investment, you know, our, how are, how do we rank up? So of the three facilities, that's on your front-page letterhead, we have the Morehead Library, the Holly Library, and the Barnesville Library. Do we, are we kind of in that range in terms of, of cost to operate, too? Is it fairly close, that forty, forty-one percent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and when we determine our increases for, for annual requests, we are subtracting the population of Morehead out of our requests, so we are only looking at Clay County outside of Morehead numbers.
Yeah, because they, they've-
Yep.
-put a substantial amount of their own money in.
Yep, and so that increase is based on eighty percent, it, we call it the eighty-ten-ten. Eighty percent of where the borrowers reside, so where in the county they reside, ten percent population and ten percent property value, that is how we determine our increases, based on the overall request of half a percent, and, so, yeah, if that makes any sense.
I think your proposal sounds good. I, obviously, we don't make any determinations-
Right.
-I speak for our board until the preliminary levy comes in, I think it's due September thirtieth, is that correct? Yeah, so, but I, you know, I, what you're, what you're proposing here, to me, is very reasonable, so.
Great, and I would also just like to say, if you haven't already visited the Holly Public Library, the Barnesville Public Library, or the Yulin Link site, I encourage you to go to those locations and visit. We have fantastic library staff in all of those locations, and I'm sure they'd be more than happy to sign you up for a library card and to give you a tour, so.
Any other questions of Liz? Any comments? Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, Liz, I want to thank you for coming in today, and I've been on the board now since January. You did a great job of giving me an overview, and I'm very impressed with the efficiency and the innovation that you and your staff have shown.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you coming in with this, as, as the commissioner, as the chairman noted, a very reasonable request.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you, Liz. Next, we have the overview of the two thousand and twenty-two financial request from the Greater Fargo Morehead Economic Development Association. Joe?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for having me, I really appreciate it. I'm going to take a second here and bring up PowerPoint, so not only all of you, but anybody listening online can, can see it as well. Can you hear me okay? Is it going across all right? Good. So it's been a little while. This is, it's a new room for me. It's nice getting out and about and seeing people face-to-face again, so it's great seeing all of you and not just over the phone or over some virtual link. I want to just take a few minutes and update you, kind of on the organization's work, especially as it relates to its impact here in Clay County. Obviously, all of you are well aware of our mission in serving primary sector companies across the metropolitan area and, and their importance to the overall economy, but a lot of times, when we talk about economics in marketplaces, the conversation tends to be about small business, big business, and in reality, for this region and any region across the globe, economies operate really in two ways. There are entities that bring money in to the marketplace, and then there are exchanges of those dollars within the marketplace by other companies that live off of our local economy. And there are really only four ways in which money comes into just about any economy or regional economy on earth. I'm going to make sure I have my controller here. Is it an enter button, down button? Ah, there we go. The first is transfer payments, and that's when you think about money from the state or from the federal government, that's coming here to support either operations at an organizational level or at an individual level. And so that's, that's definitely an important one, especially in the last year or so, with the impacts of COVID and what we've seen from state and federal government funding. The second is tourism. You know, people don't have to visit our region for their tourism purposes, but when they do, they're putting money into the local economy, whether that's hotels, restaurants, whatever services are here, is, is important. Now, in most cases, tourism accounts for just a few percentages of your local economic activity, but they're pretty important because it shines a light on what the region has to offer. The third, and this is obviously important to the whole region, but I think especially to Clay County, is our higher education institutions, because we have three here on, on the eastern part of our region, and again, those students can choose not to go to those institutions. I think it's going to be interesting to see the future of higher education, given what we're seeing with making choices of where they want to learn, how they want to learn, and what those impacts might be on a region like ours, which is heavily supported by education and has been for decades. And then lastly, again, are those primary sector businesses in this marketplace, and again, our, our view, obviously, is the metropolitan area. There are probably about five to six hundred primary sector companies of about thirteen to fourteen thousand. So it's those businesses that are making those decisions every day, whether it's a two-person operation or a two-thousand-person operation, of how do I sell my product and services somewhere else in the world, thus bringing money into this economy that then gets churned by the other thirteen thousand local businesses? And that's been the mission, in terms of, it's been the mission of the EDC from its beginning. Its geography has changed over time, and I don't know if you're aware of this, but this is the seventy-fifth year of the existence of the EDC. Again, it's been under different titles and different geographies, but back in nineteen forty-six, corporate papers were formed to create what is today this organization. So, kind of with that background, you know, your investment and the investment of other public entities and private organizations really supports how we serve the foundation to this regional economy. Back in two thousand and eighteen, the Board of Directors decided to set some goals for the organization. At that time, it was our goal to try to complete eighty-five projects, meaning assist companies to add jobs, add capital investment, add new square footage into this regional economy. The numbers that you see here are the numbers we have thus far as of last week. It's important to note that the, the capital investment, the new jobs, and the square footage, we far exceeded our goals in, in really three, two years for our three-year campaign, so about three hundred and, or just shy of four hundred million of capital investment. Our goal was two hundred and fifty million. New jobs is fifteen hundred. These are direct new jobs, meaning the primary sector businesses creating those jobs in the marketplace, and obviously, we're exceeding those fifteen hundred goals. And then the square footage was around nine hundred thousand square feet, and we're at about two point five million. That's what an Amazon fulfillment facility will add to those numbers pretty quick when you throw one point three million on one project. But just wanted to give you a sense of, we're very data-driven. We set goals that are broad like these, and then we set goals specific to our yearly work and our core areas of work. I know that Kevin and David, you, you're well aware of this, serving on the board and, and being very involved with, with our efforts, but I want to make sure everybody else is aware of this as well. Now, one of the things that we started to do, and I've been here now three years doing this work here in the region, is we wanted to try to better understand what's the impact of working with these primary sector companies? Because it's one thing to just say, hey, we're out there trying to help them expand in the region, and they have a vested interest in growing here, we have a vested interest in wanting to grow here, but how does their investment impact the other industries within our region? And so we hire a third-party economist out of NDSU, who's an applied economist, and he takes the information that we provide him, which is really what the companies give us for their projects, and do the, do an economic impact, meaning if these projects, for instance, the years twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we successfully helped fifty companies with expansions in those two years, we wanted to see how does that investment trickle through the rest of our region? And what's listed up here is how their investment adds about five hundred and twenty-eight million dollars of spending in other parts of our economy, and many of those, in fact, there's not a single company in this region that's not touched by primary sector businesses. And you can see some of the categories here, whether it's construction or administrative services or utilities, I mean, you know, it, it covers everything. There's probably thirty or so listed there. And so you can see how helping those primary sector businesses make the decision to grow here has a positive impact on the private sector across our entire region, and obviously, many of those companies are located right here in Clay County.
Hey, Joe?
Yeah.
Can I, can I just ask you, when you say the EDC helped-
Yeah.
-fifty companies, can you give an example of how?
So there may, well, I could use Amazon, since I brought it up, if you, is that good?
I just, I'm just-
Yeah.
-for the board, just to give an example of how-
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I know it's on-
How you help bring, with these fifty companies, do their investment or whatever, so.
Yeah, so June sixth of last year, we get called from a developer who says, "We need information on your market. We need available sites that meet these criteria, and we need them in three days." We don't know who the company is, we know, know who the developer was, or is, Ryan Companies, and so we use our database systems, which we helped create and, and you helped to invest in to pay for, to be able to quickly respond to that need. It's everything from labor data to specific sites. There was one specific site in Clay County that met their criteria, and so we provided them six different sites with all of the other criteria that they were requesting at that time. Within about a week, they got back to us and they said, "We're very interested in this site," which happened to be the North Fargo site that they ended up choosing, "and now they want to have us help them gather the right people, the utility people, city people, staff, and others, to have a conversation about what steps are needed to get from where they are to hopefully making the decision to, to locate in our region." As that process goes along, we're then asked to provide information on workforce, which we're still doing, because this is a long, a long-
So statistics of data and?
It's, it's data, it's location information, it's assisting them in understanding the marketplace for conversations with the elected bodies, and it's just a constant, ongoing process. It could be supplier relationships that they're looking for, but usually, the three big items that they want to know about is they want to know workforce and how you show availability, affordability, and capability. And what I think people need to understand, too, is, is this region has workforce challenges, but every region has workforce challenges, so they're looking for, how are you systematically looking to address your workforce needs? And that requires partnerships beyond just the work that we do, but we're charged with making sure that they have good data, accurate data on our workforce to do that. The second is we have to have a physical location to be. So, for example, we've been working for the last year and a half, two years, would have been sooner, but with COVID, to create a document-ready sites in our region. So within the next month or so, we will be announcing three sites, and when we say "document-ready," we mean when you, as a buyer, go in and look at the- go in and look at that property, you will have all the necessary data to make a decision on whether you want to buy that. You don't want to have a surprise 36-inch gas main running diagonal through the property. You want to know about, it's environmental, it's geotechnical, all those things. One of those sites, in fact, probably two maybe, will be in Clay County. And it's our job to take the process ahead of time and figure out what's the right program? How do you do this in the proper way so that when companies want to expand, we can compete as a region? So that's.
So when you have, if you have a select number of sites that you propose to this applicant who is looking, and I can understand why they want to remain anonymous at the time that they're doing it, do you ever seek information as to why they may not have chosen certain ones of those sites?
Yeah, and it's hard sometimes to get a response from them, especially if they don't choose our marketplace. Because then they're.
But I'm saying like, I'm kind of being a Clay County guy here.
Oh, sure, sure, as you should, here in this room.
Right. And if somebody has chosen a Fargo site for business versus a site that was eligible and met the criteria on the Morehead side, I would be interested in to knowing what was a deciding factor that made them not choose Morehead?
Sure. And it's going to be different on different projects. Sometimes it could be as simple as in this, for large national, international companies, it could be, we need to be in this region. And as part of our decision-making, we also need to have influence politically at the national level. So it could be a location chosen because of wanting to have some way of better communicating and getting responses from certain elected officials. It could be the taxes overall as they figure it into their calculation. It could be regulatory environment and whether true or not.
All those, all those things make sense. But I'm just curious if they ever will come out and just say that, you know, Morehead or Clay County, we liked your spot.
I haven't, I haven't had an opportunity in 28 years where a company said, hey, can I get the public microphone and tell you exactly why your site? Usually, it's a conversation where we can then talk back with staff and others and say, hey, these are issues that we're seeing over and over and over again. And if we can't correct them, we're probably going to continue to see the same results. That, that happens. Sure, sure.
Answered my questions.
I do want to get specific to the relationship here in this room because I think it's really important because you're making decisions. You have to talk to constituents. And they can ask you, why is it that we're making this investment in, in the EDC organization? So since 2014, last seven years, your investment in the EDC has been approximately $100,000 a year. Okay? And, and again, this is, these are conservative numbers based on the economic analysis that others do for us. We don't do. What we've learned during that time with the data that we have is that as a county, we believe that those projects and the spin-off of those, the property tax, sales tax and other fees, has generated close to a million dollars of investment. And that, that excludes any kind of tax exemptions. So we've just, that's pulled off. That's not like included in this. So what that essentially means is that as a county, as we see it, our work with the companies in the region, because I use Amazon as, we've been using them as an example. We know from the economic analysis that was done, just for the state of Minnesota, there was about a $200,000 positive impact for Amazon locating in Fargo. Because of purchase of goods and service, because of where employees live and the taxes that they're paying in the, in Clay County or in Morehead, but on the Minnesota side of our region. So what we're trying to make sure we do is give some indication back to you. And we do this with Fargo and the cities that are investors in the EDC as well. And again, please know this doesn't include Morehead. It doesn't include the school districts in the region. It doesn't include the park districts. They all have their taxes that they receive. And this is just specific to you as Clay County and as commissioners. Okay? So this, this is, is it black and white? No, nothing, nothing ever is. But we're trying to give you an understanding of, are you getting an ROI? Because if you're not, then your investment decision is other than dollars and cents. Okay? Our services, just so everybody's, and there are probably other things that we do, but these are kind of at the macro level, the things that we focus on. We do economic impact and indicator data. I'd say we're probably one of the more sophisticated data and analytics organizations, not just here in the region, but I would put us up against any economic development group nationally. Last year alone, we spent about $70,000 to $80,000 on technology to be more efficient and effective in what we do. Everything from our building and site data systems to other things that we use, but are also available to all of you. And I'll talk about one of those, a couple of those here in a second. We do the BRE outreach in partnership with the staffs, especially at the city level. So we'll go out and we'll visit one-on-one with all of the primaries, many of who will visit with us, primary sector companies within the marketplace. But here within the county, that's probably a couple dozen. TerraCon's a good example, D and M Industries, Springer Midwest. These are, you know, located either within the city or within the county, businesses that we meet with and try to help with projects. I mentioned the document-ready site program already. We also provide what we call community building and site web-based data systems. What this is, and I'll show you a picture of it here in a second, but you can go on our website. And interestingly enough, we can actually work with your IT team, Steve, if you'd like. And we can embed all this information for Clay County into your systems at no charge. And we already have done this with West Fargo because they wanted anybody that would go into West Fargo's website to be able to look up building site and other community demographic data just for their community. We can do that for you as part of this relationship and the investment that you're already making through us. If you're not aware of this, the number one issue is workforce. The number two, three, four, five issues are workforce. And for us to attract and retain people here, our biggest challenge is just them knowing us authentically for who we are. I was in Chicago, I mentioned this before the meeting started. I was talking to some relatives who live all over the country. They think I live in a region of 30,000 people. They don't know that it's on the border with Minnesota and North Dakota. And I'm like, you're my family. Let's have a drink and educate you on this. But this happens time and time again, as we know. So if you haven't seen this site, fmarea tour.com, take a look at it. It's a virtual tour, 360-degree tour. Every, every screen is 360 degrees. You can just hold your cursor down and turn it. If you have Vertigo, just take your time on that. Rate of Height, things like that. But what we're doing is we're trying to better represent to people outside who want to get connected. We have companies who want to show new prospective employees, hey, this is what we have to offer. And take a look at this. So this is available to, we want it spread. We want people to let others know about it because we want to, again, authentically show people who we really are versus a perception that they have. We also do a lot of project management. I just kind of mentioned that with Commissioner Campbell. We do a lot of public policy support for primary sector companies. And probably combined, there's about 70-plus years of economic development experience just on the EDC staff. There's eight of us is our entire staff. We do serve, I actually serve on the Resilient Morehead Economic Development Advisory Group. Ryan Ossheim, our Chief Business Development Officer, he serves on the Western Minnesota Economic Development Working Group. And we also are engaged through John Mahadchek and myself and others on a number of entrepreneurial ecosystem initiatives here within, within the county. So this is just a screenshot of the building site database. I just pulled this up before I sent the PowerPoint over a week or so ago. And just lo and behold, you can see on the left-hand side, if you, now this is a screenshot, so it's not live. But, you know, we can look at Morehead or Dilworth or any site that meets the search criteria. And then we can start digging down into more and more data. And these are a few screenshots of what pops up with the FM Area Tour. You can get everything from the lakes to, you know, Trollwood and Blue Stem to all kinds of different things in the marketplace, healthcare, education, housing. Has anybody looked at this? Has anybody aware of it? Yeah, okay, great, great, yeah. It's, you know, we want it to be used, obviously. And if people don't like certain things or we're missing things, well, get ahold of us. Others have already, so please do so. This is, if you go to our website, I'm just going to wrap up here and take any other questions that you have. You can look at different publications, our annual reports, our annual meeting, newsletters. Hopefully, you're all getting those. And then one other thing I will mention is a month and a half ago or so, as hopefully everybody knows, we held a regional leadership retreat in partnership with the Chamber through our partnership called Fueling Our Future. I'm very proud of where we have gone and what's developed in that relationship. Because for us to solve workforce, for us to solve our brand and what people think about us, for us to solve regional housing and these big issues that are just impacting everybody across the marketplace, we have to work together, public and private and nonprofits. And I think that the work that we're doing with Fueling Our Future and this retreat that we just had is just a starting point to kind of level-set our education on what our market looks like and what our potential is. The EDC is taking that data, and I'm going to have a discussion right after this meeting with some of my officers about us doing a strategic planning process for the EDC that will start, could be within a month or so, and take us into maybe early next year. Obviously, we want your involvement. We have some of your involvement because of being on the board already. But we really do plan to do outreach and collect additional feedback as we go through that strategic planning. So when we made our request to the commission, we kept it flat at the $110,000. We did that with Cass County as well. I think the question will be asked, so I'll just say it. We are asking Fargo for an increase in funding. And we've asked West Fargo, West Fargo's already approved that increase. And Fargo, it's in the mayor's budget to increase from 25,000 to 75,000. But we're also spending more and more time on private sector fundraising and going out and talking to private companies to get them to invest. It's a private-public partnership, that's what it should be. And, and we want to, you know, continue in that vein. But I think the strategic planning process will help better, hopefully align our strategies, our organizational structure, our staffing and our funding going forward. I don't see us changing personally, but hey, it's not my organization. It's yours and the board's. Is, I don't see us changing from being primary sector-focused. But how we do that is going to be the question that's going to be posed to leadership and all of you. So with that, I'd take any questions, comments?
Commissioner Mojo.
So I know you don't have the answer, neither do all of us, but the workforce piece. How do we, first of all, congratulations on the work that you've done in the prior two years. I think it's really great to have those gauges in terms of the growth that has happened. But how do we, in a time when we see help-wanted signs on everything, and now businesses from Holly to Barnesville to Morehead to everywhere, starting to limit days open because of reduced worker, availability of workers? How do we collaborate to foster the new additional workforce that we want to bring in to, you know, attract new businesses? While also understanding that we have a shortage of existing, the pool of existing workers? You know, how, I mean, what do we need?
I have the silver bullet, no one's asked me this question.
Yeah, no, I mean, it is, no, I understand. And we hear it, we hear it in our conversations. How do we collaborate to? I did see a training that the Morehead Business Association had, I think, where they were talking about how to take some of these, these tasks in daily work to kind of streamline it or make it more technology-friendly so that it doesn't take an employee to do that? How do we help right now?
Well, you know, part, part, I'm just going to speak for myself here. But one, one of the areas where I focused much of my career in economic development has been on workforce, actually. And a lot of times, the challenge is, first, it's a very complex topic. And so you have to figure out, how do we simplify this in terms of understanding kind of where the foundation old needs are and then build on, from that? This region has a lot of richness in its programming, but it's systems poor. And I don't, that's not a criticism of any one group or organizations. You see this in a lot of places. And so what I mean by that is, is that when I came to the region three years ago, my own organization was putting a significant investment in workforce across a dozen things. But when we sat down and we talked to our companies, it really came down to like four things that we needed to do as the EDC. And that's what we've done. We've said, these are the four things we're going to do. But workforce is bigger than just the four things that are in our kind of playbook. And so the formation of, of the Fueling Our Future Initiative, and one of the things, I don't know if you've had a chance to talk with Shannon Foll, the CEO of the Chamber, but Shannon and I have known each other for more than a decade, worked together a little bit in another state. And, you know, when we think about this issue, the first thing we need to have is more of what I'd call a master talent strategy for the region. What's our recruitment strategy? What's our retention strategy? What's our development strategy? What's our strategy for replacing humans in certain areas of work? Because automation does that better for us. And in fact, we need that in order for these businesses to, many of them to operate in our marketplace. Well, there are programmatic things in all those four areas that I've mentioned, but we haven't like looked at them systematically. And I'm not saying stop everything we're doing and spend a bunch of time planning. That's not what I'm saying. We still have to do the programmatic things like the FM Area Tour. But how does that fit in? And how are we all using it and talking about it? And making it something important to share the message of our brand? Because that's part of our challenge. Just definitely is. How do we take the career workforce academies that are, that are, you know, standing up on both sides of the river and build on those? And better inform our, our students of what's happening here in careers and getting, where are your passions and how does that connect in the career? So there are so many components to this. I think we have the ability to, to, to create a strong strategy and implement it. But like with most of these things, you're, you're not going to see overnight change. But we have to be committed to saying, this is the, this is the strategy. These are the programmatic things we're doing and how they fit. And possibly, over the long haul, how do we as a region create a mechanism where that expertise is sitting in a room like this and there's funding to support the initiatives that are coming up? So we're not just in our own isolated room going, well, this is how we can solve this workforce thing. It's going to take, it's going to take a, a regional effort. And I think, I think we're gaining momentum. I really do. But as I tell my team, we got to control what we can control. And, and it's going to take state policies on both sides of the river to do things better than what we've done. So I think we're going to have a public policy focus that we have to do better and different than we've done before.
I think you raised some good points there. One being with Shannon from the Chamber. As a matter of fact, just yesterday, they reached out. I'm meeting with them next week along with Steve. And we're going to talk about some of these same things regarding workforce because Shannon was here and gave a presentation. We had a real conversation about our concerns in Clay County about workforce that Commissioner Mojo brought up. I'm glad you brought up the school academies that are going on. I think they're going to be an incredible asset once they are up and running and have the ability to get these young kids to realize. You know, you talk about the primary sector businesses that's been the focus of the EDC. I think there's been a real change in, in what could be considered a primary sector job. I think there's been a real change in what could be considered a primary sector job compared to years ago. I think, I think that's changing. It's changing from, you know, when you think of a primary sector, it's the high-paying, you know, jobs that are plant-oriented or something like that. I think there's got to be a lot of focus on sole proprietorships. I think the EDC has talked a little bit about that, I know they have at some of the meetings I've been at, but I think there's some opportunities there. I have a friend who's a retired electrician, and in his time, he said he was lucky if he probably made $70,000 a year as an electrician, you know, in his time. Well, now, I mean, you probably, could probably make that in six months now, you know, but that's just the way it is, and that's how the jobs areas have changed, but.
Commissioner Campbell, can I, I just can make a comment on what you're saying there? And it goes back to just the broader workforce question is, you know, today, I mean, with COVID, it's just sped up some of the things that were already happening. I think that conversation's happened quite a bit. But I think one of the things that we're going to see more of, it's talked about more before COVID, quite frankly, less, is the individual as a business. The single person who says, I'm going to move from Maine to Moorhead. And I'm doing that not because my work is here, it's because I want to live here and my work is actually for, I'm on contract with 12 businesses, some are international, some are in Los Angeles, right? So I think as a community, what's happening, and I get excited about it, even though it's, quite frankly, a little bit challenging, is it's not about just the company with the name on the building, it's about the dozens, if not potentially thousands, of individuals who say, I want to live there, but I'm working for somebody. No, different than a company, if you think about it. A company locates here, but they're not selling their goods and services here. Our clients, primary sector, well, what if we have 10,001s who are selling their goods and services and talents? Now, they can choose to be anywhere they want. They don't have to be here. Well, that's a definition of primary sector. It's a primary sector person, a primary sector company. This is a huge opportunity for this region if we, you know, can figure out how to get that message out, how, some states are doing it right now. I don't know if you know this, but Hawaii, Vermont, I think West Virginia, they're literally paying people to come to their state and locate with the caveat, you don't work for anybody within the state. You're working for somebody outside because they want that money to come in through that person. So it's, it's more complicated, but I think more, more exciting for all of us.
I know our, I'll get, just give me one second. So I know we're kind of over our time here a little bit.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. This is a really important topic when it comes to workforce issues we're facing in here, but I'm going to have some more questions for you that I'll do it offline here.
Okay, that's fine.
And it's, and it goes to some of the issues that Commissioner Gross has asked in the past too about how we're collaborating with other entities that are trying to help in the same regard you are. Whether it's West Central Initiative, the greater, you know, when it comes to the different business associations that we have and our chambers and how are we all kind of working together to resolve these things? So I'm going to have some more, I want to have some more conversations after this.
And I may need some of my team to help me answer those questions because of their involvement.
All right.
Would like West Central.
But anyway.
I'd like to tag team, that'd be good.
Okay, so I know Commissioner Ebinger has something, and then we, but we're going to have to move on. Yeah, go ahead, Dave. No, go ahead, Joe.
Joe, just in the brief time I've been attending EDC meetings, one actually live, the rest of the time virtually, there's one thing coupled with my work on the diversion authority that just resounds with me. And I'll help you make your pitch here, but one of the things that a lot of us have commented on is how there's 12 different people doing 12 different things and not communicating with each other to try and move things forward. And just bad in any facet of our business, of our government, there's a whole lot going on right now that needs coordinating. I think within the next decade or two, that's going to increase phenomenally. When we get the diversion up, you're going to see what happened to Winnipeg in the 50s happen here. This is, you're right, my family thinks that this is out in the middle of the prairie and there aren't many people here until they see it. This is a community that's the biggest community between Chicago and Denver. We've got phenomenal potential. The big criticism, as you're aware, that you hear, isn't the weather, it's the flood. And once that's no longer an issue, you're going to see huge growth here, and not just on North Dakota side and not just on the Moorhead side, but our other communities, Holly, you know.
The whole region.
Is going to, they're going to explode. Glendon, Barnesville, they're going to become bedroom communities just like you've got in any other metropolitan area. So we really need the coordination, not just the immediate, and again, you're right, workforce is a critical need, housing is a critical need, but we're going to have to have coordination, we're going to have to be able to work across this region in unison and have people that can give us the information we need to do that for the next 20, 30, 40 years. That's going to be an extreme demand. So what you're doing here and what you've done in the last couple of years is invaluable. And I want to just get that on the record. Thanks.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, thanks, everybody, for your time and continued support, really appreciate it.
You bet, thank you. I'm going to, is, is this Taylor, is he online? Do you know, or is he here?
No, they're going to be online. You can see them, see them on our player here.
If he's not, I want to, I'm going to move to item number five because we were supposed to have that public hearing at nine, so.
Yeah, I don't see Taylor online, so.
Okay, okay. So let's, we'll come back to item number four. Thanks, Joe. We'll come back to item number four, we're going to move to item number five, which is the bond sales. And I would imagine we have Todd is, is Todd online with us from Ellers?
It showed that Todd and Lori were online.
If they're.
Todd and Lori, can you hear us? While we're doing this technology piece, item number 5A, do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee, to open the public hearing regarding a capital improvement plan and notice of intent to issue capital improvement bonds. There, I see Lori. Lori, can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, Todd?
Yes, I can hear you.
Very good, all right. So our public hearing is open. Todd, I don't know, do you want to walk us through the necessary steps during the public hearing?
Sure, thank you very much. Yep, Board Chair, Board members, Todd Hagan from Ellers.
I want to try to see if we can do a volume thing here a little bit.
Yep, testing one, two, three, am I coming in, okay?
Can you all hear?
Yep, so the county has a few items to finance. So we put together a capital improvement plan. It all fits within the parameters of state law to finance courthouse improvements, there's a storage facility, improvements to Family Services Center. We've got some things out at the power plant the county wants to improve out there. So we've got a not-to-exceed number of 3.2 million, our bonds are going to be under that, but the notice has to have a not-to-exceed number in there. The county board on July 6th did call for the public hearing, we did put it in the newspaper at least 14 days ahead of today. And so we've got the public hearing this morning. After the public hearing, I'm going to ask for Board consideration to approve a resolution. It just gives preliminary approval for the issuance of general obligation capital improvement plan bonds at that not-to-exceed number. You know, the Board can approve the resolution, they can approve it at a lesser amount, they can deny approval of the resolution, you can table the action, but we do have plans to eventually sell bonds on September 14th along with a solid waste bond for the Resource Recovery Center. Bond rates are, you know, cheap right now, are at the very lowest I've seen them in quite a while. Been doing this for a long time, and most municipalities are pretty happy with the rates that they're getting when they do bonds, so it is a nice time to be doing that if you need to. I probably would never refinance for interest cost savings, but for other things, we would consider, consider that. So, so we do have, you know, a resolution in front of the Board, the plan is also there as well. It was for public inspection at the Auditor's Office or the Administrator's Office for folks to come in and take a look at it. Most of it's pretty statutory, but it does have some good bullet points of what each point there is, what we're going to do and how much it's going to, kind of the estimated cost of what it's going to cost for each component here. And then we do have to, under state law, there's eight points that we have to make underneath the state statute there, just the condition of existing infrastructure, likely demand for the improvements, estimated cost, available public resources, we've got the level of overlapping or underlying debt of the county in there, the relative benefits and cost alternative uses of the funds, operating costs of proposed improvements and alternative for providing services more efficiently through shared facilities with other local governments. So that's kind of my lead-in on that. I think we followed everything to this point and we're at the public hearing, and I guess I'll yield for any questions from me, otherwise, any details of the project, then Steve can kind of take that as well. Thanks.
All right. Any questions regarding the capital improvement plan and intent to issue bonds? Any questions of the Board? Any, do we have any citizens connected with input?
We do not have anyone online, Mr. Chair, and we did not receive any feedback directly from any citizens.
All right. No further questions? We have a motion to close the hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee, to close the hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried, it's okay. So you have before you a draft resolution number 2021-30, is that the correct number in sequence, Clean? Okay. And that is to, resolution providing the sale of 3.185 general obligation capital improvement bonds, series 2021A.
Excuse me, there is a preliminary resolution for just the capital improvement plan, and that is, I think, just at the maximum not-to-exceed of 3.2 million. And then there are three other board actions later on in the agenda that deal with the bonds themselves.
Okay, so, so Resolution 2021-30 is the resolution which basically starts off by saying, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Clay County, Minnesota, has heretofore determined that it's necessary and expedient to issue counties 3.185 general obligation capital improvement bonds. So that's, that's basically the resolution approving the capital plan, right? So that's, that's step one.
Yeah, 3.2, yep, I think that is the one, what we're looking at right here for this action.
Okay, so the language that's currently on attachment E, which is that one, it doesn't say 3.2, it says 3,185. So are.
We might be looking at the wrong resolution. In the, in the plan, I think I did send it separately, but in the plan itself, if you've got the plan at Appendix C, as in Charlie, there's a resolution calling that you already did on July 6th, and then there is a resolution that says August 10th on it, that would be the one we're looking at there. It just gives preliminary approval at the 3.2 million mark and then approves the plan itself. You just want to make sure we don't get ahead of ourselves here.
Okay, okay. All right, so. We'd, well, I think we'd have to back all of these up, make all these, because this, they have to be in a sequence. So I would think this would become 2021-30, and then the attachment E would be 31. I think that's, because I think you were saying there's an order that we have to do these, correct?
Yeah, that preliminary 3.2 not-to-exceed one would be proper for right now, yep.
Okay, so. So basically, this resolution has the, it starts off with the extract of minutes of meeting Clay County Board from August 10th, 2021, which is today's date, and it's resolution giving preliminary approval for the issuance of general obligation capital improvement plan bonds in an amount not to exceed 3.2 million.
That's the one, yep.
Okay, so that's, so that should become Resolution 2021-30. Because if we want to have these in sequence, Steve, am I, are we good with that?
Yep.
All right. And so all these other ones, the number would be backed up by one. Clean, all right, are, you're good with that? All right. So I would be looking for a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve 2021-30. The bonds can be in the amount not to exceed 3,200,000.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion?
The only thing I would add is that when we do, because it went out in the packet, we just need to make a note that the resolutions, the numbers were changed on what the attachments were.
Right. So Clean will make those notations. Okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Yes. Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes. Okay, so that motion carries. The next one then would be resolution, in the sequence, Todd, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but in the sequence then, the next one would be the Resolution Number 2021-31, which is the resolution providing for the sale of 3.185 general obligation improvement bonds.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. So is there a motion for that?
Move to approve our Resolution Number 2021-31.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Kaylee, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose the same sign, and then notation, as Commissioner Mojo mentioned, would be the, we will be making that number sequence change on that. We'll move to attachment number F, which is, which is changed to Resolution 2021-32. And this one now gets into the, this one did not require the public hearing because it's a. it's a different type of a bond issue. So this is outside. This is the one dealing with the, the amount needed to, for the balance of the transfer station. So this one is a resolution providing for the sale of 10,130,000 general obligation waste, solid waste revenue bonds, series 2021B. And again, just to recap on this, the total anticipated cost right now is at 20.8 million, all included, including the land and all of that type of thing. We have a, we're looking at the bond of 10,130. We're, the, the financing package then also includes a state grant of 7.5 million and the reserves of 3.5 million. So of those, we would, we would be covered for anything up to 21,130,000. So we have a little bit of that cushion there, which is good to have. So if there is no further questions, we'd be looking for a motion to approve resolution 2021-32.
I move we approve resolution 2021-32.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ebberger, second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, oh, I suppose we better do a roll call vote on this one as well.
Commissioner Kaylee?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebberger?
Aye.
All right. All right. And then lastly, we have resolution number 2021-33. This is a resolution authorizing the county to enter into a credit enhancement program agreement with the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority. And can we get a, a little description of what we're doing here?
Sure. This, after discussions with bond counsel on this, and I've, I've done many solid waste bonds for counties in the past, we're able to qualify this bond issue for state credit enhancement, which is basically, the state of Minnesota guarantees the bond payments. So that would move your double A underlying rating up to a, a triple A. So the highest rating we can get is a triple A, and that's what the state's credit rating is. So we kind of piggyback on, on, on their rating by just applying for that and, and getting that, getting that approved by the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority. They're like the administrator of it through the state of Minnesota. So we would be going in for both your underlying, like we would with the capital improvement plan bond. And then this one gets a little bit more of a, a little bit more of a, a security backing behind the state of Minnesota. So we did get an opinion from Dorsey and Whitney, our bond attorney, this morning that it, that all works. It's fine. And the agreement is pretty boilerplate, change the names and the amounts and what it's for. So we're pretty confident that, 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 that you would approve, approve this as it is a, a program that, that you qualify for. So it's pretty nice. Again, triple A is the highest we can get for a bond rating, and this is, this is one way to do it if, if you, if you qualify. So hopefully that explains it. But yeah, I'm here for any questions on that as well. Pretty happy that we can do that on this bond issue.
We are looking at a timeframe of the sale of these bonds in September. What's a, what's the turnaround time for a request from the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority? What's the timeline to get a response on that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get that going as soon as, you know, tomorrow. Get that through their system. They need a couple of weeks to process that. That, you know, should dovetail quite nicely with our, our bond rating call. A lot of that's not going to happen until the end of August. So, so yeah, the rating agency just needs to see that all signed up and kind of wrapped up. When we get our underlying rating, then this will also show up in the rating report as well. So I think we've got this all timed correctly for that. They, they do need some lead time, but we definitely have that in our schedule already.
Okay. That answers my questions. I mean, it makes sense to, if we can get the triple A, that's just for, to our benefit, so.
Yeah, it's a $500 application fee. It's already in the bond issue. It's a small price to pay for, you know, two, two, two notches up for the bond rating. It's a large bond issue. It's gonna make, it's gonna make, make a pretty, pretty big difference, so.
Lori, any comments from you?
Uh, no, yeah, this is a good idea, and we did do this on our jail bonds too, so.
Yep.
Okay. What's the board's wishes on resolution 2021-33?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-33, which is authorizing the county to enter into a credit enhancement program agreement with the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. Todd, does that, does that complete all of what we need to do for, actions we need for today?
It, it does. Thank you very much, everybody, for, for your actions, and we'll definitely package all this up, and we will hope that the market stays good, and it has been. So I'm not seeing anything on my crystal ball that's gonna tell me any different at the moment. So we'll keep you guys posted as we march, march along with the bond issues. So thank you very much.
All right. Well, we hope to hear some good news from you in September.
You bet. All right.
All right. Thank you.
Yep, thanks so much.
All right. We still don't have any, I, I guess if we've got our staff here, I'd like to, we had item number four, I'm just gonna keep that, we'll get that towards the end. If, if he's not here, who might as well deal with it.
Doesn't appear so.
Huh?
Doesn't appear so.
Okay. All right, so item number six. Kimberly, apologize for, once again, we're late. Recorder's budget.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, fellow commissioners. I'm here today for our, to present my 2022 Recorder's Office budget. In our revenues, I have a 2.8% increase. I did do an increase in our general service charges, charges. We have seen a substantial increase in recording of documents lately, and I anticipate that to continue through 2022. Under our expenses, I have a total increase of 1.82%. Couple items on there that do have some significant changes percentage wise is my office supplies budget, increasing it $700. So it's showing a, just over 21% increase. We do have to purchase special certificate paper to issue our vital records on, and so I need that to issue the amount of certificates we have been lately. Under my computer software line, my very last one there, I did do a decrease. It's showing a, just under 22% decrease. When I went and changed my software, I did our backup programming differently, and I had decided to take part of that out of my technology fund and keep part of it in this fund. Now with those use of those CARES dollars in my scanning project, I feel I have enough room in my technology fund to move all of my backup hosting to come out of my technology fund instead of this computer software fund. So that's why that's decreasing 22% for an overall of 1.82% increase. You have any questions for me on my budget?
Any questions? Your compliance fund, we had a, last week, we heard from
Yes, from Nancy.
Yeah, Nancy, and you, you can assist in that through your
Yeah, so that was gonna come out of my technology fund. I have two different ones, a compliance fund and a technology fund. And since some of that CARES dollars freed up this room in my technology fund, I felt I could use that, and it felt under, fell under the guidelines.
So does that, does that show up on here?
So my technology fund is kind of an in and out on here on my budget. It's money, it's a revenue in and an expense out, and then I have a fund that keeps rolling.
Okay. Okay, so your technology fund doesn't even show up as revenue or expenses?
It shows up as a, as an in and out. So it's under my
Misleading? No.
It's under this equipment over 500, this $100,000. And then on my revenue, it's $100,000 for recorder's equipment.
Okay, okay. That's the, that's the, that fund. Okay.
Yep.
That makes sense. All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Rhonda? You have a few things for us today.
I do. Good morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners.
Good morning.
Okay. Jamie and I are here for several items. The first item actually doesn't relate to Jamie's unit, but it relates to our child protection unit. So I'll just jump right in there. This is a position in Michelle Thoridall's division, our Children's Mental Health Child Welfare Division. We have a resignation of a social worker with her resignation effective August 17th. This worker handles child protection, child welfare, children's mental health, and home and community-based services. We are requesting approval to fill this vacancy as, as I repeat every time I come here in terms of this service area, the workload demands require that we maintain the staff. So if possible, I'd seek approval for that and approval for any backfill should there be internal interest.
Make a motion to approve with backfill.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried.
Okay, the second item, actually, the, the second and the third agenda item's gonna go a bit hand in hand, but I'll talk about the, the first one. In the 2021 budget, when I submitted my budget, I had submitted a new request item, and that was for two eligibility workers in Jamie's unit in our financial division to start October 1 of this year to work in our long-term care medical assistance program area, because we were anticipating two retirements and dealing with some substantial growth in that program area. So I'm here to kind of move forward with that plan as submitted in the 2020, 21 budget. We do have two folks, one that's been here over 42 years, leaving. Her last working day will be in November. Her employment end date will be at the end of the year. And then the second employee, who we did anticipate actually retiring in 2021, has actually extended her date to March, or to April 1 of 2022. So thus the second part to this request. So my first request is seeking approval to move forward with those two positions to start October 1. And then the second part to that is to approve the kind of unanticipated overlap between January and March of that employee starting earlier before that retirement, if that makes sense.
If I can, this was, this was brought, Rhonda brought this to our pick committee meeting, and we did discuss that. And really, the majority of, of her request has already been approved in the 2021 budget process, including the overlap of the one position from October, or from, is it October, September?
To October through December.
Yeah, October through December. That was already basically approved in, in the budget plan for 2021. But like normal, anytime we replace a position, you know, they come for us to ask for that replacement of those two.
Correct.
And then, and then the other, the other thing that has not been approved would be the overlap of the one position from January to March.
Correct, 2022. Yes, correct.
And, and you feel that's necessary to have that extra training time?
We really do feel it's necessary. In fact, later I'll be discussing, I did actually put a new request in the 2022 budget to move this workload from three FTEs to four. So, but that's a separate issue. But yeah, everything for 2021 is in the budget as, as requested here. And then the only difference is that January through April 1 overlap. And our idea would, there would be that if we brought two of the workers on October 1, the retiring worker that would be done in November, we'd probably just split her caseload between those two new workers. She would help us get through the training. And then when the second person retires at, into 2022, she'll have her full caseload that will then have to be distributed. So it will allow us a bit more time for training, because this is a quite complex workload.
The first action item is recommended by the pick committee, and that is to authorize the hiring of the two positions to replace the retirements with the idea in mind that there's gonna be the overflow, or the, the training, extra training time involved there from October to December. Are you requesting backfill?
Yes, please.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion that these two hirings be authorized as described with the overlap.
With backfill. Okay?
Backfill.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ebberger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion?
I do have one quick question.
Commissioner Kaylee.
So April's a long ways away. Do you have written notice of the intent to retire on that date, or what happens if this person decides I'm gonna push it back further?
Yeah, we do have written notice of the first retirement, and the second one, she has emailed us her intent. To be honest, I'm not sure if she's intending to that to be her formal written notice, but I suspect we'll get something more formal coming forward. If that retirement plan changes, so we'd end up with four people in that position, which might take care of my new worker request if approved. However, if not approved, you know, we do routinely have movement and attrition. I would anticipate being able to handle that, should that be the case. Would certainly inform the board.
But the, going to Commissioner Kaylee's question, so the replacement that we're doing is, is based on the, the intent, the intent of the retirement of both.
Correct. Yes, correct.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. And normally, normally on a 2022 budget request right now, we would, we go through the budget process, but you're in a position right now where you want that overlap.
Correct.
And you could, but, because you need to hire that now.
Yes.
You know, so we're kind of in a, in a position where we're, and, and actually, in the, through our pick meeting, this overlap will probably, expenditure will probably be covered in savings, salary savings. So technically, you know, we talked about that, Commissioner Gross, where, where even though we're doing this overlap, from a budgetary standpoint, it's unlikely that there's gonna be additional costs because of the savings involved with retirement. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. Based on the wage calculation I worked with Darren on, considering the, the two existing employees, adding the two new and the overlap with the retirement dates, we still realize a savings.
Okay. I think that's important to know, because it's, we haven't, we really haven't done any 2022 budget approval items at this point, because this would be budget neutral, and you want to act on it in 2021. I think it would be appropriate for us to at least have that discussion as a board. And are there any questions regarding that? And going to Commissioner Kaylee's question earlier, if that, if that, if that retirement didn't happen on April 1, we're gonna probably have to have some more discussion. we're going to probably have to have some more discussion.
Correct, I would come back before the board, yes.
Okay. Okay, so what's the board's wish in this? So this, we'd be looking for a separate motion to allow the three-month overlap from January 1 to March 31st.
Yes.
Move to approve overlap.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kaylee.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. All right, those action items are done. Rhonda, we might as well.
Go into the budget?
Right into your budget.
Okay, I was wondering if we could start with my new item request, and I would have Jamie to stay with that because it ties into what we were just talking about.
All right.
I'm obviously not requesting any decision by the board, so this is just informational purposes for planning into the future. But I think it was handout on your, your desk for my budget review, and the third page in from that is the new item. So it looks like, looks like this. Document I'll talk from, so.
Oh, you're talking about the handout, okay.
Yeah. It's the third page from the budget review. Lots of papers.
I'm, I'm flopping through and I don't see, I don't.
Oh, the front of it looks like.
Oh. Never, okay.
There you go.
Never mind, I got a separate handout besides this one, okay. All right.
So this is, I, I had one new item in the 2022 budget, and, and this was it. An eligibility worker. We're just very concerned about the growth in this program area. This is the long-term care. So it's for individuals applying for medical assistance for long-term care services. And so it's for folks who are over 65 or have a disability. It's for folks that maybe go into a nursing home or on community-based waivers in order for them to be supported into staying in the community, assisted living programs, those kinds of things. These workers also manage some of the other programs that go along with that, such as the Minnesota Supplemental Aid Housing Support and the Food Support Programs. On average, in our research, the caseloads for this population are around that 250. When we originally looked at this, they're around 260. What Jamie is finding now, they're around 200 to 250. So I'm suspecting other counties have added staff as well, is what it sounds like. So if we end up in our, the previously discussed plan with three full-time equivalent workers, when Kim retires in April, we would end up with our three. They would still be at caseloads around 325 and growing. So we're a bit concerned, those caseloads are just too high to manage. And we're feeling that a fourth person was needed for this program area. So the new request reflects an additional eligibility worker starting March 1, which would give us four weeks of overlap for when Kim retires April 1. It does include federal financial participation, which we do receive for this program. So we do receive some revenues to offset the cost of the worker. And I did account for the savings in the previous plan with the two workers retiring and the new workers coming in at the bottom of the scale. There, it, it does request utilizing some of those savings that could make this a little less impact on the overall levy request. So that is our request. I didn't want to wait until, you know, obviously, March or April to come in and realize, oh, we need another position and request it at that time. I wanted to put it in the 2022 budget for planning purposes and discussion going forward over the next few months, so.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Rhonda, can you speak a little bit on the complexity of these cases? What is the once established, how much time does it take to manage an established case load?
Okay, I'm going to turn that over to my expert, Jamie.
The biggest obstacle would be training in the asset assessment. So anybody that has assets and comes in, we do have to help them reduce their assets. And once the assets are reduced, it's typically managing the caseload, working with the providers if they're in and out of the nursing home, working with the social workers to make sure they're receiving the proper services that we're allowing them to bill for. They're typically also on food support or MSA. And I guess it, it's very time-consuming and working with the elderly population, you work with a lot of the family members or authorized representatives, which becomes more time-consuming to try to explain it to multiple people, too.
So the time commitment is more front-loaded in terms of new, establishing a new case? Is that fair?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are these, did you mention, Rhonda, are these? Are, are these matching? Do we get, do, do they, are they revenue generating?
Yes, we do receive federal financial participation on our actual cost to the, to the staff. So yes, they are, mhm, at 50%. And, and it can go a little beyond 50%. We, we use 50% as our average because some programs bring in FFP at 35%, some at 75, and we kind of do that average based on the work that we do. But I, I budget 50%.
So when you put in your new request line item, is it the net cost of the county?
Correct. The net cost is 25, yes, was, it was 50% of that, yes.
And just, just so we're clear, Rhonda?
Yep. We do, the calculations that I've worked with Darren on in terms of the cost of the, the two staff that are retiring for an annual, annual amount, the two new hires plus the, a new hire then starting March 1, and then the overlap. What we needed, the net amount that we needed to levy additionally to do that whole plan was $10,570.
From, that would be from April 1 to December?
Well, I said March 1 for a little bit.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But, yeah. To do the whole, you know, to kind of calculate the whole plan out, that was the additional levy amount.
Net cost.
Yes.
2022. Okay. Commissioner Gross?
Excuse me? So these people, these eligibility workers, they work primarily with elderly and nursing homes, is that?
Not all of them, that's just this particular program. We have 27 eligibility workers, and we have a family team, an adult team, and then a healthcare team. And these folks kind of fall under that. These, these folks have a little specialty population, the long-term care, because of the complexity and the training that's needed, so, but we have a multitude.
When you're talking long-term care, you said each of these people have around 250 cases or 270? So that would tell me we have around 700 or more people?
Well, right now, we have 975 long-term care cases between three workers.
Are they all in nursing homes right now, or?
They're either in nursing homes or over the age of 65. Majority of it's over the age of 65.
So they might be requiring some care, but they might be in home?
Yeah.
That goes to your question.
Yeah, it's just a lot of people.
It is.
Okay.
So just wanted to give that new.
Take of time, obviously, and as we mentioned in pick, no, no decisions on new requests are made as, as the presentations, as you present.
Right, yes.
But we will certainly consider that when we look at our overall budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Rhonda, do you want to continue on with?
To the budget? Okay. So I'm going to speak from the first sheet that was handed out to you at the beginning of your meeting. At the top, it says Clay County Social Services 2022 Budget Review. So you may, you may also have the line item budgets, which is about 11 pages or so. Generally, what I do is I kind of do a summary sheet, and I speak from my summary sheet, but I'm happy to come back and talk about any line items that, that stand out to you or that you'd like more information on. But for today's purposes, I'll, I'll speak from my summary sheet, and I'll speak more specifically about the budget items that have the most impact on the levy request for the county or are making the difference in the levy request. So at the top of the page, on the left-hand side, is just a levy summary. I've indicated what the 2021 levy was, and we did plan to use $200,000 in fund balance. But when I came in to present my 2021 budget, I was requesting a levy of $12,234,622. The 2022 levy request, as the budget I've submitted so far, is requesting $12,226,47. So there is a slight reduction in that levy request, which rarely happens for social services. Actually, I had to go back and look at this budget multiple times, worried I missed something. But I, I, there are a number of factors that have helped us for 2022. So the difference in that request is a negative $13,975, so slight reduction in our request. On the right-hand side, I've gone through the budget and have highlighted the areas that have either increased or decreased or increases in revenues or decreases in revenues that have, that have the most impact on the levy. So the first one is our salary adjustments. Our salaries are budgeted in five different places throughout the budget. And what I always do every year is I cut those out and look at, okay, what's the change? Just, just in salaries and benefits, not the other administrative things. We budget for 137.8 FTEs, resulting in about $12.7 million. The difference between 2021 and 2022 is that increase in the 69,584. And, you know, it often represents step increases for staff. However, some of that gets mitigated by staff turnover and retirements and things like that. The two retirements that I've spoke about are reflected, those are reflected in this number. So that number likely would have been higher if they were continuing. But nevertheless, we did have that increase there. Secondly, then I go through the budget and look for some of the program areas that might require increases based on utilization and history over time. County-funded burials is a piece that we do talk about from time to time. The county is required to provide for burials for individuals who are indigent or have no, no or limited income in being able to properly provide for burials. We budget, I did provide a little bit of the detail down below there. We, our 2021 budget is $120,000, I'm requesting $130,000, so that's the $10,000 increase. I do need to this fall have a meeting with some of our funeral directors. They are requesting some adjustments to our county burial plan, which I would bring before you to approve. Generally, we spend, you know, as you can see what our expenditures were for 2020, we're at the 130. I do anticipate we may have to increase our rates a little bit, so I felt we better plan for that.
Rhonda, in 2021 or 2020, did we have any, any COVID-related deaths dealing with county burials?
You know, Steve had asked me that. I recall one for sure. And we did do some adjustments in the burial. It actually ended up being a little bit less of a cost, if I recall right. But I believe we did have one.
Because I know, I know FEMA was reimbursing for all COVID-related burials, so I'm, I'm just wondering if that would qualify for a FEMA reimbursement?
Yeah, it may be, it was not submitted, or I didn't provide that information to anyone for.
I think it's, I think it'd be worthwhile to.
Looking at.
To do that.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Contracted providers, so right in the middle of our page gives you kind of a history of what I'm looking for there. But the contracted providers, I did apply a 2% to a few of them, resulting in the $10,234. This is not an exhaustive list of our contracts. We have multiple contracts. Some of them are, get fluctuated based on grants. Some of them I did not request an increase because of our utilization, didn't need it. These are some that I felt appropriate to apply a 2%. And so that is that $10,234. Impact to the levy there. And then detox, we have an increase of $36,969 impacting the levy, and you can see the detail down below, what our actuals have been, what we're budgeted for 2021, and what the request is for 2022. Contracted mental health case management is our biggest budget issue this year. It's, it's a complicated program area. So I'll just give you a high-level summary, but children's mental, well, this is for both children and adults' mental health case management. In Clay County, we contract that service out with three providers, Lakeland Solutions and Access. And they serve about 816 kids and adults under that contract. They serve kids that are on, and adults that are on MA, that are on our PMAP plans. Well, those are the two areas. And they represent about 37 FTEs managing all of those. The portion of that contract, that's MA, the state is, the county's used to, we've negotiated those rates with our providers at the local level. They bill medical assistance, and then the state bills us 50% of that cost, and that's what we budget. That is changing effective January 2022, pending CMS's approval of our state's plan. And rather than each county negotiating the rates, they want a state-set rate. CMS has not liked what Minnesota is doing with the rates. They think there's too much variation in the rates, and they want a state-set rate. So the state has contracted with an organization called Guide House to evaluate the rates, and they're just looking at the contracted ones right now. And as a result of that study and the proposed rates, Clay County is hit pretty substantially with an increase in the rates. So for example, we contract for children's mental health case management for $480 per kid per month. The new state rate is 710. And for adults, our rate is around 222, and the new rate is 410. So everything's staying the same, just applying the new rate, you can see where we have the budget impact. And that's what that 143 is. So what I've done is I've budgeted kind of the worst-case scenario. That worst-case scenario, if this goes forward, it doesn't change, we're not able to get some state funds to mitigate the impact. That's what we're going to need. I'm hopeful over the next few months that I'll get more information, we'll be able to work with our state on maybe phasing the rates in over a couple budget periods. Might be helpful. So I'm hoping that all made sense. We're on the end of, for Clay County, we only have one caseload of adult case management. Otherwise, we contract everything out. Some counties contract out maybe half of it. Some counties do everything in-house. It's kind of a variety. I've been with the county for 29 years, and I've always known us to contract it out. I think it's a, a, a good decision to contract it out. Our mental health organizations have the array of mental health services, which I think support the folks that they're serving, so I think it makes sense. I also believe that over time, I have known that our negotiated rates that I've worked with our providers on have. with our providers on have probably been a bit low. And I've probably needed to come before you to talk about increasing them a bit more. So I think that there is some rate adjustments warranted, but I was quite surprised that they were that much, so. In the cities area, they contract out, actually, the impact is not on the county, it's more on the provider. The, the new state-set rates are significantly lower than what some counties in the, in the metro area are contracting for. So you have some counties that are being significant, or some providers who are being significantly impacted in a, in a negative way as well. So you got people, counties and providers on the ends of the continuum here for this.
So Rhonda, these, these, the state establishes these new rates?
Correct.
And it's based by your locale? I mean, because you said the metro area.
Well, in the past, it was negotiated by the counties. So the metro counties would negotiate with their providers on a rate, we negotiated with ours. Now it's a state-set rate across the board.
And that's what they will pay up to?
Uh, it would, it will be the, well, so what they did, when they first came out with these rates, there was a lot of commotion between counties and providers and the whole funding formula, the factors that they used. There was lots of questions. And so Guide House went back and now they've come up with these, their bands. So for example, they said for children's mental health, the banded rate based on all of the assumptions, the caseload size, the wages is 710. Now county, if you want to ask for a rate exception based on caseload or, there's two rate exceptions. One is based on caseload, the other one is based on, like diverse, if you have a real specific diverse-serving organization. So it's quite complicated. You can go up or down.
I guess my, I guess my question, because, because a lot of ours, and you said it yourself, we have, we contract these things out externally a lot.
Correct.
So my question is, is if, if our contract, if they're willing to do that a lesser rate, can that happen?
No, no, because these are Medicaid rates.
Okay.
Yep.
That's, that's why I was trying to.
That's an easier answer, sorry.
I'm just trying to understand it, so, all right, okay.
So, just so you know, I, I did, I wanted you to know that I budgeted kind of what, if this all goes into play, like it's, is today, that's the additional funds that are needed in this program area to maintain the service. The other thing that's important to know is that this is mental health targeted case management for adults and children. And in statute, we are required as a county to provide this service to adults and kids that are eligible. So it's not as though we can say, well, we're not going to do the service, we're not going to do the contract. We do have to provide for the service. So, okay, and so I'm, I'm happy to come back and just talk specifically about this issue if more information is needed, but it is evolving a little bit as well. Okay, a couple of other areas is building rent. We had some rent increases, so we pay about 398,000 in rent overall at the Family Service Center. And that does reflect an increase from 2021 to 2022, that's that 15,000. Little bit of increase in our merit system, which is our civil services, employment relationship with Department of Human Services merit system. A little increase in our electronic document management system, caseworks, maintenance and IT support. If you recall, with CARES funds, we did implement an accounting addition and we used CARES money to stand that up and for the first year's maintenance. So this is now going forward, the county obligation. We did have some earned revenue decreases, but we also had some earned revenue increases and some grant allocation increases that are kind of helping to offset all of these other things and thus the, the reduction in the levy request.
Okay.
So that all made, made sense? The one thing I did not talk about that I normally always do is auto home placements.
Ask that question.
And that is on the second page. I'm, I'm showing you just a little bit of the trend that the best place to look is that middle yellow line. If you look at in 2020, what we actually spent, we spent 2.6 million dollars. That's revenues less, or expenditures less revenues that we bring in for placements. So we were about 139,000 over budget in 2020 because we budgeted 2.5 million. So what we did in 2022 is we kept that 2.5 million dollars. I didn't increase it at all. Again, just kind of based on the trend and where we see our placements going. So there was no change in the levy request for auto home placements. But you can kind of see where, where that history is going, so.
Commissioner.
Thank you. Rhonda, we've been talking about this issue for a while since I came on the board. That was when we had seen our major spikes and, you know, granted, I'm happy to see that the numbers had trend, been trending down for a while. I think 2020 unfortunately is maybe a deceiving number, the 229 unduplicated kids, I think because of COVID and, and being home for school, a lot of cases maybe weren't being reported. Unfortunately, there were kiddos that maybe didn't have an eye on them. And so I, I think that, you know, I, I'm thankful that the number is low, but I think it will maybe see maybe a spike.
Yeah.
As these kiddos go back to school in September. And I do see that the actual expenses of these placement expenditures is higher. And so in 2016, when we had 292 kids, the actual cost was about 4 million. And so we're, we're not far off of, I mean, less than 100,000 of what that actual expense was with a substantially lower kid count. And, you know, I know that we have a subcommittee to talk about these. Commissioner Gross and I are on that. If you feel that, that as we progress towards more kids being in school, you start seeing those things trend up, I'd be happy to talk to make sure we're mitigating however we can. I did see on your budget, it's, it's a big one, so it takes a while to go through, but we do have some areas in terms of foster home recruitment. You do have some dollars there and it's not a ton of dollars, but let's just make sure that we're using the money that we do have budgeted to make sure we're recruiting great people to help be a safe place for these kids.
Yeah, points, well, well taken. The, you're absolutely right. I think that 2020 is not a good reflection of maybe what we're going to be seeing in 2022. I think we are going to see some increased needs across the board as schools pick up and we start to have eyes on kids. We definitely have some placement issues and James and I have spoken and we do need to get our placement committee back together. What, you know, we've, you may have heard some of the closures of the psychiatric residential treatment facilities that have happened in Minnesota. They've got a couple of new ones opening up, but I've been a part of some state conversations recently along with Prairie St. John's and trying to brainstorm how we can develop some of those services here in Clay County for our region. But we, you know, it, I, I teetered on what to do with this budget. I, you know, we often try to not just look at a year at a time. We try to look over time so that we don't have these huge fluctuations in levy requests. But I am concerned in the next year or two, how placements will, will go. We have a lot of kids that are moving out of care into permanency, which is kind of bittersweet situations because some of them were not able to return home, but are moving into, to permanencies, so it's a good thing for them. But we are seeing a fair number coming into the system as well, so.
I said, oh, excuse me, a couple of questions. Now detox, I see you had a line there on detox. Isn't that under public health too? Do you both have detox requirements?
Public health operates the detox and we pay for it out of the social service budget. So if that makes sense. So they have an operating budget, they include all of their revenues and grants that they anticipate and whatever that deficit is between revenues that they bring in and their operating costs gets budgeted in the social service budget.
Well, good for you. Another question on the merit system. Can you explain that a little bit to me? I thought we're all under, you get COLA increases and what have you, merit. What's our merit system? Is there another pay schedule?
Uh, no, the merit system is just really our kind of civil service agency that, you know, we've been a part of it, again, I don't, we've been a part of merit system since its inception probably. And quite honestly, Darren and I have been talking about whether we could move away from merit system and just manage all of the federal requirements for our hiring on our own, which we both believe we can because we're a big enough county, we have everything in place that's needed. But for many smaller counties, they don't always have the human resource departments that, that can manage all of the requirements that are needed when you receive federal funds. Because we're a public entity, we pass through a lot of federal funds. There's a ton of requirements in terms of the hiring that we have, hiring, firing policies that we have to have. So Minnesota merit system was established to provide all of that for Minnesota counties to make sure that we're in compliance to receiving federal funds. But as counties have beefed up their HRs and have developed their own plans, many counties are moving away from merit system. And as counties move away from merit system, those that remain end up paying more. So it is, will be important for us to look at this as, as we go forward. We pay about 27,000 annually for merit system and that includes the 5,000 dollar increase from 2021 to 2022. So you can see how it's growing pretty substantially as counties move out. Yeah, so, so that's on our radar for the fall to, to look at that and bring before you more information about the merit system and the pros and cons to moving away from it, yeah.
All right. Rhonda, thank you.
Thank you.
We may be, you know, your budget, of course, is
Yeah.
large, so we'll probably be asking.
I'll be coming back, okay, thank you.
We'll take a very short break. Daniel, presentation on our building committee.
Good morning. Today I'm presenting my budget. Like I say, I'm kind of feeling like Rhonda, I won't get into the line items of everything, but if you have any questions on the budget or anything you see in there. Basically, my budget's made up of two separate budgets. One is the number where it starts with the O1, that's the budget that covers the courthouse.
The courthouse, the jail, government center, DMV and storage, the new storage building and then the operations and salaries of, of that budget. So, so that's the O1 budget. And then the other budget that, that I watch is the family service center budget and that's made up of the mailroom central services, the family service center itself and the building and grounds within there too. So, so, so those are the two budgets that, that we have here. The one item that kind of affects both is the salaries and we have some different changes historically in the past, but one building, the family service center has been, been down in salaries and then the courthouse has been up. This year, we did something a little bit more different is I sat down with Lori and we dedicated each, particularly custodian salaries to each building. I think in the past, it's all been kind of grouped together and team cleaning type stuff going on there. And since the restructuring of this, we, we have a custodian lead now that, that kind of covers everybody. So everybody's dedicated to a building, we're able to, to tell who works in what building. And so this is the first year where we've, we've done that and hopefully moving forward we'll be able to track that just a little bit better. So overall, you'll see the family service center and salaries, you'll see, you know, down in the, in the, in the O1 budget, they're up. So by restructuring as well, we had some long-term, a couple of long-term employees retire this year and so between both salaries of the buildings, I think we're right about even on, on not, we're not seeing much of an increase this year, so. Other than that, as far as the family service center itself, we have a revenue increase this year of that 50 cent that we took to boards, that total number of 29,638 is that, that's the increase of the 50 cent. That's 10 contracts that are up in 2022 for non-county tenants. And then the rest is a department, counties that have budgeted that increase, so. And then we also capture some of that from Rhonda's budget as well from the state, so. As far as the family service center, we only have one second floor, we're still trying to rent, one wing there, so we're working on that. And the overall, you know, if you see at the bottom of the overall, it shows a loss of 282,588. Talking with Lori, that's, it shows that, but she's, enters in a depreciation equation that's a little, little in her realm, but she's indicated that we have about 1.150 for actual cash, so I'm a little, it's a little fresh for me learning that, but she, she said the service center is doing well that way, so. As far as the O1 budget, we did add about 93,000. We're up about 14, 14%. That's the government center operating cost there too, so. And then as far as the DMV, you know, at the first of the year, that, you know, the old, up north will be going away. So basically what we did is we're shifting that budget that we did every year up north there and we're essentially shifting it over to help cover the storage costs. The only thing that we're not tracking is the salaries of the DMV have shifted over to the mall. So we've combined that all together to track it that way, so, so. Other than that, that's really about it for me. There's fleets that we're kind of looking at, these aren't in these budgets that you see, that's Fund 50 that Lori tracks, but we don't have any anticipated adding any fleet vehicles at this time this year. But other than that, it's what I got.
Maybe a question and clarification, Steve for Lori for later, that 365,000 depreciation line, do we still have, do we still have capital bond payments that we're making that, that would come out of that line item?
Can certainly follow, I don't, yeah.
Because I, I mean, because we don't write out a check for depreciation.
Right, right.
You know, when you look at, from a cash standpoint, if that's, that might be her, her way of saying that we, we still have bond payments for that facility.
Yeah.
Or those facilities.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to clarify that that, that would be that, we don't have to have that answer today, but, okay. Any other questions, Joe? All right, thank you for your budget presentation. We'll take that into consideration. And then you have, you're up two on this next item, that's a presentation on the family service and a security plan.
Yes. So if you recall, a few weeks back, we had a conversation with the board about, you know, what do we do? Do we, we hire the, do we keep the security guard at the front of the family service center or not? Originally, the history was we, we hired him when COVID started to essentially make a heated lobby for somebody to sit in and call up and have somebody come down. Since then, we've opened up, we're, we're definitely finding that that role has shifted more to a greeter-type scenario is what he's doing. We also have an experienced works, or actually the program is met now, lady up in the information booth there too, doing that. So, but what we had did, what we did is I teamed up with Mark Sloan. Him and I went over and the first thing we did is we took that suggestion, Commissioner Ebner, on the, trying to secure, you know, physical barrier of something, kind of the reference to the LEC has a front main lobby there. So we went up front there, we kind of assessed that and, you know, what, there was a few challenges we And what we found is each of those areas have a mini lobby within there. So it's kind of staying with your theme of, you know, let's secure the mini lobbies within the building rather than the front. And, and so then when clients do enter in the building, they can't just walk on back to the department. So that's kind of the, the route we, we've taken as far as the design. So we looked at all the lobbies that were not secure and, and put together a project on adding service windows, doors and stuff, and still kind of maintaining that customer service look to it as well, too. So, so that was our first step. Then what we did is we kind of went around and met with those on the ground people that serve the clients, got their feedback on how we'd want it to look. And then, and then we met with, I guess we call them the stakeholders of the FSC. They're basically supervisors and, and county department heads to discuss this whole thing. And the five points we really came away with is add some physical security to the building, add some more surveillance. We do have, right now we have cameras, but we had some, some dead zones we identified. Some help buttons and talk about some room layouts and some de-escalation training. So all together, but the main first step we thought was let's secure all the lobbies so, so they're secure. And then with that recommendation, we would recommend that we terminate services with the SB security guard. I know Commissioner Kaylee, you had some concerns on the building being confusing, which I agree, you walk in, you're kind of like, where are you going? And he's been great that way. We're going to work with, we, our plan would be to work with Met to have a more, instead of being an info booth, have more of a greeting-type scenario there as well. They, they are part-time, so we're looking at some more help getting up there as well, too. So, so that's basically our plan. I do have a, I did attach a family service center security plan. I just didn't want to get too detailed into what that is since it's security. But I do have some quotes. I've ran this by the, the building committee. I, I was waiting on a second quote, so my plan was to come back next week, present the plan this week, come back next week with the total project costs. We ran it by the building committee and we'll say we do have funding available for this as well. So, but I'd be back next week with a, with the project cost on that, so.
I guess based on the, on the presentation and, and the building committee's recommendation to go along with this, you would be looking for action today on the contract, though, correct?
Yeah, correct. If, if done today, it's a 30-day notice. So we originally, we're going to pay for this out of reserve. So we have, we're going to save about 14,700 if we do it today, roughly.
Give the notification.
Yeah, if we give the notification, they'll be done in 30 days, so.
Any questions? Commissioner Kaylee?
I just want to thank, this was a lot of legwork.
Yeah, yeah.
And I really appreciate that you talked to those, like, the reception staff that meet people right away when they come in and that you started there.
Yeah.
Because I think those were the people that were really feeling like they were in an unsafe position. So thank you for that, for that foresight and for doing that work. And I think Commissioner Ebinger and I, one of, some of our main concerns previously, when we had discussed eliminating this position, was that there wasn't a, a fully flushed-out security plan. And so it looks like we're taking really good steps in that direction. Thank you.
Yeah, and we do, Commissioner Kaylee, we do have a plan, a sub-safety committee plan that we've had, FSC, that's a sub to the safety committee. We plan on keep talking about this as well because things are changing and so have, we have an avenue for people to bring to the family service center to vet out, so.
Excellent.
Yep.
All right. We'd be looking for a motion then to, you have a question?
No, I was going to say, in light of the fact that we do have a security plan in place, I would recommend we discontinue the contract.
Okay, that's a motion to discontinue the contract for security services.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, again, by Commissioner Ebinger. Need further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a follow-up. I know this is not necessarily the family service center, but with the addition of the courtrooms on second floor and our third floor, we've talked about security concerns for the stairwells and elevator in terms of this building.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I know that you've talked to Sheriff Empting about transport for that. Where are we standing with that plan?
I'm not, I don't know.
Well, not transport. I just mean that they talked about in terms of if they had to escort up to third floor.
Oh, oh, I see.
For the courts.
I see.
We have some gaps in.
The design, right. If we were to make this a full courthouse or courtroom across and all of that, I think we are, we're still in that, how the design will play out. In fact, we're right in the middle of trying to price out what a courtroom would cost and everything. So we have more conversations to go on that, but.
So in terms of security cameras, do you have areas that you're worried about that there may be gaps in this building?
Uh, we're, we've got a lot of coverage in this building and I know they watch it down there quite a bit, too. So I don't, we have a lot of camera. I can certainly review that, though, and see if there is a dead zone.
Okay. And then just to follow up in terms of data storage, adding this many cameras would, would obviously change the amount of storage that we've needed. Is that included in the plan?
Um, the, the cost to add the cameras in the plan, I believe Mark Sloan kind of tracks the licensing of it all.
Okay.
That part of it, so it's two different budgets there. But yeah, it's, it's, to pay for the cameras are budgeted in this proposed plan I'll bring next week to you. Those cameras, also, we talked about those cameras. I got the idea from the ground level of people that sit at the desk to use that as a tool. So if a supervisor's uncomfortable about a lobby area that, within the lobby, that camera will be added to that lobby, the supervisor can watch that camera, too. We can give rights to that so that we can use this as a tool to kind of watch and let others within the department that, you know, help, help with the monitoring of their own situation, so.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Okay, thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Move on to our 1035 item. And that is a presentation of remote work policy. We have Darren and Anna here today. And it looks like we have Mark and we have Kathy, we have Rhonda. Anna, do you want to come up, too?
There.
Okay, all right.
Their moral support today.
All right. Okay, Darren, good morning.
All right, well, good morning. Thanks for having me. I was, had to clone myself this morning because I had another video conference in the other room. So I was trying to watch the board meeting and the Lakes Country Co-op meeting as well. So starting this remote work policy, I will have to say that this is probably the most complex and researched and discussed policy that I've worked on in my 10 and a half years here because there are so many rabbit holes. And I brought my Strive Committee posse to help me back up anything unless I start becoming a babbling idiot up here. So what I did is present, had a presentation for you to kind of go through what the policy that we've been working on. And the first slide here gives you a little bit of the history and development of the work, uh, remote work policy. We've had at least eight Strive Committee meetings to discuss this. Remember, we had the managers retreat on May 25th and we received guidance on that to pursue this remote work policy and kind of get into the details. We also reviewed several other policies from other counties. AMC and David Drowne Associates also did a very good template that actually a lot of the other counties that are going to a remote work policy have, have used as a template and we use that as well. And we also collected some remote work policies from Wilken, Otter Tail, Gnome and Wright, Stevens, Moorhead and Cass County, North Dakota. And from that list, as you can see, those are all surrounding our county, basically. And they, they, we compete with workers from those counties that have already implemented a remote work policy. We also sat in, Anna and I sat in on a webinar with Hennepin County, which has actually gone to a remote-first policy. So they look at remote workers first and then if they have to bring them in or they can't remote work, then they give them an office to do their, their job. We also had a, a discussion with the Otter Tail Human Resources Director, who has also implemented the remote work policy. And then after we got all of that, we asked the directors and department heads to ID the positions that can and cannot remote work. As you know, the 24/7 positions aren't going to be able to remote work, but there's a lot of other positions within the county that is, that they are available to remote work. And then they, we sent it all to the department heads for comments on, by July 12th. We got responses from them. We took it to the Personnel Issues Committee on July 20th and then again on August 3rd after we had made some changes, which brings us to the board presentation today. You did receive a copy of this last Wednesday to kind of review it. It is kind of a long policy, so I wanted to give it to you ahead of time. And then I also put a copy on your desks for today's review. No decision is expected today. This is for information only. And once we can hopefully answer all your questions, don't be afraid to ask questions because we've probably asked them already and have discussed them. So hopefully, we will have answers for you as well. And we do have, if you recall, the, during the COVID, we, at the beginning of that, we had to go as a necessity to a remote work. And so we do have a, a framework of a remote work that we'd been working under for the last year and a half. But this policy actually puts it in the policy, gets more detail on the checklist. And so as we go through this, I'll, I'll kind of explain that a little bit more. So the next slide is page one of the policy. And the thing that we talked about and the two principles and criteria that we, was kind of the bedrock of the policy, is that the remote work must benefit the county, the employees and the citizens of Clay County. The county, as far as space needs possibly in the future, is the employees of giving the flexibility to do work at home if they have the capability, and also the citizens of Clay County and the convenience of receiving services. The other portion of this key principle was that the citizen should not experience any or detect any differences in services from a remote worker than they would in any other And that's, that's kind of what I went over there. The remote work was determined by the employee's position. It must be capable of remote work. There can be no reduction in quality or timeliness of services provided to the citizens of Clay County. And all positions in remote work should be and has to be approved by the department head and the employee supervisor. And what I, during one of the PIC meetings, Commissioner Gross asked a kind of an interesting question, is that had it not been for COVID, would we be still looking at this? And I would say probably maybe. The, because we have looked at it before. I think it was prior to when I got here. I don't remember bringing it to the board before. But now that, you know, the COVID has kind of forced our hand and it, it can be done. We've, we've seen that already. We've had very few, if any, reports of poor service or slow service or anything like that. And so it, it kind of forced our hand to really take a look at this. And I think a lot of the departments have proven that it, it is possible to do that. Of course, there are a lot of gray areas and, and we've hit on a lot of those already. Page two. One of the things of remote work is the employees. And maybe not, maybe the position may be able to remote work, but maybe the employee would not be able to. And that has to do with these four things that are shown on the screen now. They have to show a past and present level of excellence of performance. They have to have a high degree of self-direction and motivation. They have to have a suitable remote office location and an environment to work from. So if they don't have internet service or anything like that, they probably would not be able to remote work. And they have access to acceptable technology and communications equipment. You know, some of the younger crew have very good techno, technology skills. Some of the older people might not have as much technology skills and may have a harder time working from home. The next bullet there, and I'm only really going to highlight some of them. If you have questions on other bullets, please, please bring it to my attention. The one thing that we spent a lot of time on discussing is the, and we came up with this, this language here, is that remote work locations should have minimal distractions and interruptions. One of the things that came up was it's, it's not a substitute for daycare. And so, you know, if you are trying to have a video conference and you're running a child daycare in your background, it's probably not going to work as a remote work employee. But there's, there's variance of that, too. If you, if you have a sick middle-schooler that's home and you're still capable of doing work on your computer from home, then that might still be acceptable. So a lot of these things that we found in discussing, discussing, discussing the gray areas, we tried to leave a lot of that decision-making up to the department head and the supervisor. So you'll kind of see that throughout this, this policy. The next thing is the two types of remote work. And this, this kind of had a lot of discussion as well, but we came up with two definitions. One would be a hybrid and, and an intermittent. The hybrid would be more on the lines of somebody that has a set schedule. You know, you're going to work from home Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and you're going to work from the office Tuesday and Thursday. Whereas an intermittent might be once in a while, if you, if you're sick, but you don't feel like coming into work, but you're not that sick that you can't do some work, or maybe you have a sick child, or, you know, you would do it once in a while as long as you had the capability to work from home. So that would be that one. Some of the general provisions, the conditions of employment remain the same. There's no extra wage, there's no extra obligations, no extra benefits. Everything remains the same. It's just your work location is, is going to be changed. And the, the other thing that had a lot of discussion was the supervisor must be able to effectively evaluate the remote worker's performance. You know, a lot of times you, you might have this thought that a remote worker, you know, he's working from home and you never see or hear from him except for occasionally. And what, a lot of these remote worker positions that we have identified do have some kind of a tracking method. I know social services, they fill out, what are they called?
Yes, that's what I asked.
Yeah, that, that stuff. And same with, with public health. So there, you know, between reports, filling out reports, time tracking, daily calls, video conferencing, stuff like that, having meetings, we feel like the supervisors would be effectively being able to evaluate those remote workers. I did some, pulled some data and from what the department heads were telling me, we would have about 79 employees that could do hybrid remote work and we have about 132 that could do intermittent work. Now, that doesn't mean that everyone is going to do that. It doesn't even mean that everybody is capable of doing that. But I, what I did is I took the positions that the department head said they could work hybrid or intermittent. I aligned that with how many individuals we have in those positions and those are kind of the numbers that I came up with. So that might be, seem a little high, but probably not every single one of those would be working remotely. On page three, I'm just going to highlight some of the other points here. The remote work is not guaranteed and it can be revoked by the department head at any time. Likewise, the board could rescind this policy if they feel like this isn't being beneficial to, to the county at that, at that time. Remote workers must comply with all county policies, local, state and federal laws, so there's no change in that. to, to the county at that, at that time. Remote workers must comply with all county policies, local, state, and federal laws, so there's no change in that. Hours of work for the employees in the remote situations would conform to a schedule agreed upon by the employee and the supervisor. And as per Commissioner Campbell's question during a PIC meeting, that those hours of work must follow the Clay County personnel policy. So a 40-hour full-time employee must work 40 hours, whether it's at home or, or at the office. Effectiveness and continuance of the remote work for employee will be evaluated yearly or as needed by the supervisor. So when the person has their yearly evaluation, they would also be evaluated on their work-from-home progress and their producing what they need to do, whether it be here or at the, at the office. If there are problems with a remote worker, that they're not getting their work done, or they're having problems or not attending meetings, then the supervisor could call them back as well. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Darren, I have a question in regards to the evaluation after a year. Would it be wise to have a three-month probation review of that, just because a year can be a long time?
Right.
If someone's just going on that. Would that allow a supervisor, three months to see how it goes and then provide input where areas could be improved?
I think that is certainly possible. Later on down in the policy, we don't allow probationary employees, which is six months. We don't allow them to remote work. So they would be in office doing that. Now, once they finish their probationary period and then they go and are identified as, as a remote worker, there could certainly be a follow-up to see if that is, is working for them.
Well, and maybe probation period wouldn't be the right terminology because it would then be equated to a probationary employee, but just some sort of review before the one-year review specifically on people that are new to the remote working environment, I think would, would help the employee get feedback, but also definitely help us identify issues before a year.
I think one of the, Commissioner Mojo, I think one of the other areas in here that could potentially address that is that, that this is subject to review by the supervisor at any time.
Correct.
You know, so, you know, I don't know if we have it, if we have designated in here that, that there has to be certain reviews done at a certain time within a calendar period. But I do think your, your question is somewhat answered in the fact that if, if there's something that a supervisor is seeing earlier than the one-year period.
Yes.
They can still call that out.
Yeah, and, and that's what the, the, the policy says, that, that it can be evaluated yearly or as needed by the supervisor. So if you do have a remote worker that doesn't seem to be working out, there would, we would expect more meetings with them, we would expect some kind of review. Hopefully it wouldn't get into the disciplinary process, but that's certainly possible if, if you're having serious problems with a, a remote worker. And if you, if you are, there's nothing in this policy that says that you can't pull them back into a...
Well, and I understand all of that. I just think if you have a standard, a shorter evaluation period, then there will, will be no appearance of bias towards any employee. Everyone's getting feedback.
And I, I think that's good, and I think we can incorporate. That's, that's kind of what we're wanting to do today.
Yep.
And that's why we didn't want any action today is because we do want the rest of the board who hasn't been part of the PIC to review this and to offer suggestions. And I think that's a good one that we can...
Absolutely.
Because I, I think the plan was just for the rest of the commission was that the PIC wanted this presented today for review and then give a period of time for comment or suggestions and go back to PIC again for potential rewrite of the areas that...
Yep.
We want to see addressed, and that would be one. I think it makes sense to do that, so. And then, and then it would come back for this board in a future date. You know, I, I know Mark Sloan wants to see this happen real soon, and, and I think others do too, but, but we, you know, this is, like you said, this is a significant policy and we want to get it right.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. So that's a note, a good notation there from...
Yep, I have it, I have it marked down and starred here. And then also, we had some discussions on the, remote workers must follow the provisions of the Government Data Practices Act, other privacy legislations in Clay County data private, privacy policies. So, you know, they would have some, a lot of this remote work is most likely going to be electronic, so there won't be a lot of paper products, although I did talk to Rhonda and they might have some, some paper products, but most of it is electronic. But they would still be required to, you know, password protect, lock up sensitive items and, and that type of thing. So anything that they would do in the office, they would still have to do at home. And then I've already talked about employees cannot remote work until completion of their probationary period. The other thing is that there's no intent of providing, you know, chairs, desks, lamps, all that other stuff to a home office. Mostly it's going to be just technology, laptops, webcams, that type of thing. There will not be a real need for phones because the computer can, you can do your phone through the computer, through a jabber, so that would be taken care of as well. And the last page. Once the policy, if it is adopted, they would read through the policy and then also, in your copy, I have the remote work terms. So the policy kind of lays out everything, and then the remote work terms would be for every, it gets into a lot more detail in the bullets, points and stuff. That would have to be signed by the employee, and that would, that would be for all employees. So anybody that's going to remote work, they would have to sign this remote work terms of agreement. And then at the bottom of that, you'll see the remote work terms in agreement form link, which will take them to a link that is this form here. And what's different about this form is this is where the employee and the supervisor would sit down together and work out what the conditions of the remote work would be. So the employee would fill out the top part and the database programs required, and then the supervisor would fill out the rest of the form, signifying the conditions of that remote work. Both of them would sign, the supervisor would either approve or disapprove, and then that electronic copy comes to Human Resources, which we would also forward to IT so that they could get this person set up for remote work if, if they don't already have the capability. A lot of our employees already have the capability of remote, remote work because we've been doing it for a year and a half, but if there's some new employees that don't have a laptop or anything like that. I did talk to IT and Rory said that it, it would cost about $2,000 per employee to set somebody up who isn't already set up with laptop and, and licenses and all that stuff. But like I said, a lot of our employees are already set up for, for remote work because of the COVID pandemic last year. And that's the end of my presentation.
I guess I'll...
Open for questions.
I'll, I'll make a few comments regarding the PIC committee, and I want to, I want to start with going back to your comment about Commissioner Gross's question about had, had it not been for COVID, would we be doing this? And I do recall, many years ago, this was brought up at a county board and, and the concern, of course, at that time was accountability. And, and in fairness to all of our employees this last year and a half, I think they've proven their ability to do this. And, and I, you know, I think, you know, I'm giving my perspective on this now, but I also believe that, that moving forward and, and these positions where we can do this, it's going to help retain and it's going to help recruitment of, of employees. I think this is the wave of the future. This isn't just public entities like you talked about. Many private entities are going to remote work where they can. There's, like you mentioned, there's a lot of rabbit holes. Another thing for, for the board to know, there was a lot of questions regarding legality issues and, and Brian has, we submitted several questions in terms of issues related to legal things that might go on in terms of claims and those types of things. Workman's comp claims and what have you, and so those have been addressed within the policy. There has been, I, there has been one, one thing that was brought to my attention, and I just want to make sure that we clarify that too, is we do have some employees who might be North Dakota residents.
Yep.
And do we have to, you know, this is something that we might want to look at, do we have to address issues in regards to people now working from home in North Dakota and how it pertains legally to issues, whether it's workman's comp and stuff like that?
I, I actually called, talked to MCIT on that topic.
Okay.
And as long as they're working, whether it's in North Dakota or Minnesota, as long as they're working for Clay County, doing Clay County work, they would be covered under workman's comp.
Okay, all right. So...
But if they're out mowing their grass and cut their foot off, no, they would not be covered.
But I guess...
Grass isn't growing, you're going to grow.
I guess, you know, I, I for one, from years ago when this was first presented, I've done a complete 180, and I, I really believe that this is, this is something that I'm certainly going to support a final product here.
Okay.
And I, it's for many, many other reasons here. I, but I just, I just think I want to get everybody an opportunity to, to weigh in on the policy and, and so...
Yeah, I think, I think it's, I think a couple of big things factor into it is, number one, all of our surrounding counties are doing it, and that becomes a very recruitment and retention type thing. As a matter of fact, I got an email from a acquaintance over at Morehead HR, who left here. And she said that they just hired somebody because they have a remote work policy. That's the reason that they went to Morehead City. So that it is out there. I think also with the public health thing, you know, the, all the talk about variant D and COVID continuing and everything else, I don't think this is going to go away, and we might as well be prepared to do it rather than reactive like we were when this whole thing started.
Commissioner Kaylee, and then Commissioner Evering.
I think this looks great. A lot of work was put into this. Thank you, everyone, everyone, for all of your work on that. One concern I have is that a policy like this, if you're not careful, could easily become discriminatory for an employee based on age, family situation, you know, the number of kids you have or gender. I'm not really worried that that's going to be a problem for us, but it is something that supervisors should keep in the back of their mind as, as you're making these decisions on who can work from home and why, that we're doing that very equitably and not, not based on some of those factors. Although if you do have a bunch of kids at home, I have kids, it is really hard to work at home if you have little kids, like, that's the thing. So, I'm curious if you have talked to supervisors at all about if this will increase their workload and just more supervisory needs for those employees that are working from home?
And maybe the gallery can help me out here, but I know that some of them have expressed some concern with the supervisors having a little bit more. I, I know when I was there and then Anna came back to the office, but Melissa was at home. It was kind of, you know, tough to get everybody on the same sheet of music sometimes. So I think there will be some challenges, and that's only two people. Some supervisors have a lot more to, to deal with. The one point I failed to make, and I think it is kind of important, that, you know, if this is adopted, it does, we, Commissioner Campbell talked about space needs and saving money and all of that, whereas if some of these departments in the future get bigger and bigger, you know, we can move people off to a remote site and, and not have to expand the, the footprint of the department by office sharing or something like that. So a hybrid worker would not have their own office per se, we would have workstations for them. And so you could have two employees but only using one office, which would be cutting down. So as the departments grow and this option becomes available, some of these people could be pushed out to their office, to their homes as well.
Commissioner Kaylee, I, I do want to respond to your one question regarding, and I think it's an appropriate one, where you talk about potential age discrimination or that type of thing, or whatever might be the case. And I think that's extremely important, why, why we looked at the position being qualified and not the person. Because if the, if the position is qualified, then that will, that will start the chain where that person can then request that with their supervisor. And I, we wanted, we wanted to definitely stay away from, you know, have, you know, maybe have a supervisor who might have a favorite or something like that too, you know? So we want to, if, if the position qualifies, that's, that's the key element there.
And, and I think we would put that right in the job advertisement, that this could be a remote work, remote work position, which could, you know, help in recruitment as well.
Yeah.
Were you finished? Okay, Commissioner Evering, do you, did you have a...
Yeah, just, it's already been touched on, but we're going to have some valuable employees here who are not in a situation where their home is, is usable for this, or their technology skills aren't appropriate. And even if it's a qualified position, I just want to make sure that we keep in mind that we've got to accommodate those employees as well.
Right. Yep, absolutely.
Commissioner Gross.
I was just thinking that if we had a full-fledged COVID like we did last year, where they closed down, thing, would this policy be in the way of anything? Where we, people would have to work from home or whatever. Would this policy preclude anything? I mean, we say, well, you got to stay at home because, because of COVID, and they don't sign the policy of working from home. Is there a problem or...
I don't, I don't see that as a problem because everybody that worked from home, to my knowledge, signed the, the work agreement that we have currently at the beginning of the COVID. If you remember, we had a checklist that actually was provided by IT of the work-from-home policy, and, and people signed that and we put that in their personnel file. If, so, so your question is if they, if COVID hits again and they have to work from home, but they don't want to, I guess that we would handle it the same way as we did with this COVID, this COVID...
I think my response to that would be any emergency actions that a board takes under a situation like that would supersede a, a normal policy anyway. And Brian, I think, I'd look to you for that, but I would think that would be the, you know, we were, our board is the one that said, okay, you're working from home.
Right.
And, and, you know, we didn't...
We didn't have a choice.
So, yeah, so that, that's, that's where that would go, but it's a good question, but I, I think that would, that would happen through an emergency declaration.
Yeah, most likely.
All right. Not that there's going to be one.
I hope not. I think Kathy hopes so.
Well, any, do we, so, I mean, I, I agree, Commissioner Kaylee mentioned the amount of work that went into this. I know we've had two PIC committee meetings and, and boy, we talked about a lot of rabbit holes.
That's true.
And, you know, I think we've tried to address as many of it within, and, and ultimately the concern that our citizens might have regarding this. And I think there's been a good job done on this. I guess I'm looking for, for the board, if you, you know, I think maybe if, if we can, maybe within the next week or so, if you have any additional comments or suggestions regarding the policy, if you could address those to Darren. And then after that week time period is up, then maybe we can arrange another PIC meeting that could review those suggestions and...
We have a, we have a PIC meeting scheduled for next Tuesday already, so if I could get any other comments I have before then, I can include them into the PIC meeting.
And then we could, you know, whatever those suggestions might be, we could incorporate them into this policy and then after that PIC meeting, so we could be looking at a couple of weeks from now. And then what would, just out of curiosity, Darren, and, and you're, through the management committee... And then what would, just out of curiosity, Darren, and, and you're, through the management committee and also the Strive for Excellence Group, what's your anticipation of a, of a time period for implementing a policy like this once we approve it? What, what does HR need and what do your, what would your departments need?
Well, as far as HR is concerned, we wouldn't need a whole lot aside from the, the signed forms that we would put into their, I think it would be more of a question of what the department heads would have to, you know, the timeframe that they would need, whether it be one week, two weeks, a month. I, you know, I think maybe I'd probably want to get some more input from the department heads to see how much time they would need.
Maybe you could do that between now and then too.
Yep.
But we can always put an implement, implementation date on the policy, and then if they're not ready, they're not ready, but.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you approve it, let's say you approve it in two weeks, it doesn't mean that all of a sudden 100 people are going to be out on remote work the next day. There, there's going to have to be some meetings and, and making sure that the equipment is there and everything else. So I think as far as approving it, it could be effective right away, but maybe implemented as, as needed.
That's, that's what I want to get is, is when, when we're going to, if and when we approve this policy, it should include an effective date.
Okay.
Right? So let's keep that in mind and.
Okay.
So that, that would give, that would give all of the supervisors forewarning as far as, okay, if this policy is done, here's your timeframe to do your work. I know Anna's got a big smile on her face back there. She's got a lot of work to do, but. Alright, are we good? Okay.
Alright.
Thank you, Darren, and thank you to all of your group for working on this. Alright, we have that one item.
Yeah, I do believe we do have them on teams now, just.
Okay, alright, so we have, and this goes back to item number four that was on the agenda, and it's attachment C in your packet that was a letter addressed, I think it, I think it, Steve, it was, you received this, did you?
Yeah, Colleen and I received the letter.
Okay, and so we have this request from Taylor Radke. You've reviewed it, and I don't know if we want to do an overview on it. Taylor's here. Can you hear us okay, Taylor? Like her screen is locked or something as she's moving, okay. No, that's not.
I think this is Taylor's mom.
Taylor's.
Taylor, I'm sure Taylor's on.
Taylor, are you, can you hear us?
Looks like both Taylor and Susan, you have your microphones off.
Might need to turn your microphones on, on your, okay, there I can see Taylor now. Are your, is your microphone muted? We're not getting any sound from them.
Are they trying to talk?
Hmm?
I wonder if they're trying to talk on the phone.
Did we lose them?
No, I was just going to see if we had the ability to call them.
Can you hear us? Steve, where are we at here? We got it.
Under, Colleen, can you pull up a phone number on that request?
Microphone's in.
Would you like them to work on it and I give them a report?
Sure, yes, that would be good. They're going to work on that and then we'll go into, I, that's, we'll start with Commissioner Mojo on committee report, and as soon as we get some acknowledgement, we'll go right to it.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I attended the MetroCOC Executive Committee meeting. We discussed the 2020 audit and did have a motion for executive level approval. We then talked about the Metropolitan Housing Needs Analysis that's currently ongoing and that the Cass Clay Community Land Trust is looking for some office space. So MetroCOC did have some office space. That conversation will continue. And then talked about the Senate Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act and local road improvement funding projects that Minnesota is looking at. I also attended last week a agricultural tour with Representative Michelle Fishbach. We did talk a lot about the updated drought conditions and policies that are affecting CRP hay. Just for this board's acknowledgement, we all know that we're in a drought. Last month, 39.7% of Clay County was in the D2 level with zero being in the D3 level, which is the extreme drought. Currently, we're sitting at 78.6% of the county being in the D2 level, and now 35.1 has been moved to that D3. So there are some desperate needs for rain out there for our farmers. Our Minnesota Joint Powers Board met last week as well at the Red River Basin Commission. We had an update and presentation from Christine Holland from River Keepers. The lower levels of the red have really been helpful in terms of cleaning the banks, able to access areas that they haven't been able to for a while. And then had county reports from all the different entities in terms of what they're seeing with different projects. And we talked a lot about construction projects and the increased costs that we're all dealing with. Last night, I attended virtually the board meeting for the Buffalo Red Watershed District. General business items at the beginning, we had a presentation on update and budget request again from Christine Holland from River Keepers. Rob from, Rob Sip from the Red River Watershed Management Board gave an update. And then there was action on permits and discussion on several different ditch updates. There was a citizen to be heard that came that had concerns. They live in Wilken County, had been working with the Diversion Authority on some mitigation for that project. They're having an issue in terms of fill that was needing to be brought in and waiting on approval from, I don't know if it was the diversion liaisons or what, but they had come to the watershed to make sure that they could kind of help. They're ready to start the process so that I, I don't know if it was just waiting on approval in terms of costs or what, but I did send a message this morning to the watershed to forward that information, citizen information, so that we can either talk about it at the MIC board or land management or whatever, just making sure that we're able to address the concerns there. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Anything, Steve?
Do you have a phone number we could go ahead and try to call in here if you'd like to do that?
Yes, Dave, let's, I got my order. Dave, why don't you? Oh, wait, let, I want to see if they're going to answer right away, let's. Nothing. Alright, Dave, go on.
Last Tuesday, I attended the groundbreaking.
Last Tuesday, I attended the groundbreaking we held for the Clay County Resource Recovery Center work site. A number of us were there. It was a, a good occasion and, and good to see us get started on that. Yesterday, we had a special finance committee meeting and a board of authority meeting for the Diversion Authority in order to pass a resolution to authorize a project agreement for the flood risk management project. We'll be signing that with, or the, the chair will be meeting with the representatives of the Red River Alliance, the triple P that we've just signed on with, and get the signature on the commercial closing on the project. We're looking at a financial close to take place early in October. Right now, it's tentatively set for October 8th, but things are moving along nicely. And that completes my report.
Alright. Commissioner Keely?
Last Tuesday, I also attended the Resource Recovery Campus groundbreaking. I just wanted to thank Senator Ekin, Representative Mark, Mayor Carlson, and, and the others who joined us for that. That was a great event. On the fourth, so Wednesday, we had the Morehead City Planning Commission meeting. There were two public hearings at that meeting. The first was for variants from the 15-foot setback requirement in the, in a flood fringe overlay. And had that flood fringe overlay not been there, then where this building is being built could be much closer to the, to the property line and the planning commission's,
Can you hear me?
The planning staff.
Okay, okay.
Recommended that there was a little inset in the, that fringe overlay, so moving that building back a little further, since it was a large building, it would be further back from the street in this residential area, so it would preserve more of the neighborhood feel. And we did recommend that. It'll go to the city council then for further review. There was some concern to neighbors about the size of that building. The second public hearing was a request from Pastor Sue Klosterman for a conditional use permit for a housing shelter, and this is in the building that used to be a Montessori school next to the Speakeasy is on one side, and then there's a church on the other side. So there, they have been using that for a women's shelter and had like an emergency use exception. So we just heard from Pastor Sue about the needs for women in particular for housing. And we approved that conditional use permit for that building. Friday the 6th, I attended the First Friday's Food of the North with the Cass Clay Food Partners meeting. We met out at Grand Farm in Horace, and there was a discussion on innovation in the agriculture community and all of the projects that they have going on out there in 2021. They've already connected with 100 to 125 startups, really looking for innovation and testing new technologies and stuff on that grand farm facility there. There was also a presentation from NDSU, Dr. Rex Soon, on precision agriculture technology. And he brought a bunch of his doctoral students to talk about some of the work that they're doing there. You know, with the drought that we have, with the, the changes in our food systems, it's really great to see how in our area, there's so much innovation happening in agriculture. And so, thank you to all of those folks. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Are we, we got?
Taylor and Susan, are you able to hear me?
Yeah, can you hear us?
We can hear you now. Thank you for your patience.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, we, Taylor, we have your letter that you had sent on July 20th outlining your request. And this goes, according to what we have here, there was a request back in November of 2020 and another request on February 9th of 2021, and then the request today. Do you have any, anything else you'd like to add to your letter?
Um, nothing else really to add, other than I still have the same existing conditions happening with the moratorium going on. I'm a landlord and my tenants aren't required to pay rent, and some of them pay rent, but the majority, well, let's say about 50%, knowing that they don't have to pay, don't pay. And, I mean, and I, I'm, I have the ones that aren't paying signed up on Rent Help. And that's nice and all, because a lot of them have been approved, except that Rent Help doesn't pay any money, or they haven't yet. Can you hear me still?
Yes, yes, we can, we can hear you.
Okay.
So the, the rental assistant that your renters would have qualified for, I believe those payments would have gone directly to the landlord. Am I correct on that?
You're correct. Yep, that's correct.
And you haven't received, you haven't.
I set up my account and everything, ever since the government took it over and started the Rent Help, I haven't received any payments from the government, the Rent Help program. And there's no one for landlords to contact. There's no phone numbers to call, but the tenants all have a phone number, and the landlords can call the phone number, but they say we only deal with tenants, not landlords. And when you ask them if there's a phone number to be connected to, they give you an email address that no one contacts you back at.
Frank?
Is there someone in the auditor's office on with us now? Ask a question to them.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, I'm not, excuse me, I'm just asking the question here.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gross, I don't think Lori is on at this time.
I'm just wondering, what, our policy for waiving penalties and interest for late payment of, of property tax, what item do they qualify under in this letter or this request? What, what policy do they qualify on?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think that the COVID emergency response is what we've, what we've dealt with in the past in these other two requests.
I, I wonder whether if we approve something like this, whether we wouldn't be setting a policy for every landowner to come in or every rent, or housing owner, excuse me. And we would set a policy for them to come in and say, hey, I got some late payments, I want, I want relief of my taxes or something, yeah. I, I'm just wondering, that would set a policy, I'm concerned about that.
But I think, Mr. Chair, before the, the commission this morning, just to be clear, is the only thing that we have before us is, are the penalty piece, the tax request that he makes within, with, within that, we wouldn't have jurisdiction over that discussion. And so we, we just have the, the penalty piece that we're, we can address today.
I just have a problem with, they've requested several times already, and I don't know if COVID is the main cause here or not.
Okay. And so the taxes are still outstanding, am I correct?
Correct. So I've paid as many as I can so far on as many properties as I've been able to, but I have a few that are still outstanding. And the moratorium keeps getting extended, so I'm unable to evict any tenants. I can't even charge late fees. Not that they would pay the late fees anyways, because they're not paying rent, but there's nothing I can do.
I thought that.
And they know it.
No?
I've never had these problems before, and I've been a landlord for 20-plus years.
Yeah, I, this is a, this is a difficult one. I, I, and it goes to Commissioner Gross is kind. I, and it goes to Commissioner Gross's comment that we, you know, we have, I can't think of the hundreds of potential landowners who were landlords that could fall into the same category. And I know we're talking about the late fees here, but in, in the past, anytime that, if it was a qualifying reason, the taxes, part of the condition of the waiving of the penalty was also that the taxes had to be paid and brought current. And I guess that, that's my next question to you is, would you be able to get those taxes into a current position?
Yeah, if you can end the moratorium.
Well, we can't do that. That's a federal moratorium. That's, no, it's a federal, it's a, you know.
Is the COVID relief no longer an issue? I just don't understand, because my tenants don't have to pay rent, but I still have to pay taxes, so I have to magically make money and pay late fees, and I can't even charge late fees. I just, I don't understand how that's fair or possible or... I mean, I understand still owing the amount of money I would owe, and hopefully I'll be able to get the money from my tenants or the system that, rent help that has been set up. When it was Lakes and Prairie, there was phone numbers for me to contact, and it was easy to do. And I'm 100% willing to put in all of the legwork to get everything accomplished, but there's nothing for me to do, no phone number to call to say, hey, where's, you know, you've approved my tenant, why am I not getting a check?
Commissioner Mojo, did you have?
Yeah, I, this-
We've been contacting the governor, and yeah, we had no response.
So-
All right, okay, if- Okay, if you can hang on one second, Commissioner Mojo has a comment to your question.
Well, Taylor, when I, when I apologize, I, I know this is very difficult for landowners, and it's been difficult for a lot of people, but it seems like in all of the discussions we've had, that it, it has put landowner or tenant, landlords in a really difficult position. And so I'm sorry for that, but I can say that if you go on the Minnesota Housing Government website, just search in COVID-19 emergency rental assistance, the moratorium is ending. I will say that. And it kind of gives timelines in terms of how, as a landlord, you could evict someone or, and I know it may not seem like there's the right answer, but there's some answers. So maybe there's an option there. Unfortunately, and I think we talked about this a little bit when you came before, at some point, as a landlord, you have to figure out if this is in my financial best interest anymore. And it's probably a really hard decision, because it's not fair that you've been put in this position, but at, at some point, you have to cut, cut the, you might need to sell your property. And I don't, I don't say that lightly. I know that that's difficult to hear and really difficult for me to say, but I don't know what else this board can do to help with that issue. I mean, that's, that's-
I, I definitely agree with you. I want to sell all of my properties, but I'm still unable to, even if I decide to sell my houses, I'm still unable to evict my tenants. So I would have to sell my houses as, like with the tenants in them. Like the house would come with the tenants, because I can't evict them.
Yeah, I am, I'm so sorry. I mean, I, I can say that we are having conversations with our local legislators and representatives to let them know that this is unreal. I just don't know what else-
And I don't want to get out of paying any money. I want to pay every single penny I owe to every place I own as soon as they end up giving me the money, and it's coming from the government, so I'm guessing they're good for it. I mean, rent help, I assume is from the government.
Well, Steve, I thought we'd had a conversation with Darla Lee from the HRA, that it, the help is on the way, it's just bottled, bottlenecked for the landlords. And so when I go to this housing website, the Rent Help Minnesota is only open to renters and landlords. We understand that there's struggles, but it sounds like the homeowner assistant fund program is there. It's just that there's a bottleneck getting the funds to those that need it.
You're correct, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mojo, that is what we've heard from the HRA, some very similar things to what Mr. Ratkey is talking about, is that, that there is such a great need, that while there is approval, just getting the funding out there is part of that, part of that, the problem. And I think that, you know, the HRA shared their experiencing that themselves.
And in addition to not receiving payment for my rental houses, even the people who are not paying a penny, I'm still required to do all of the repairs to the houses when they call me. So, I mean, everything is costing me money, and I'm having to do side jobs just to make money in order to pay to fix the houses for the tenants that aren't paying rent. And, I mean, I, I just don't understand how these type of laws can be put in place, or even temporary or otherwise. But every time they say the moratorium is gonna be over soon, they extend it. And, I mean, I, I would love to sell my houses and get out of the rental business, and, and I can't believe I'm even saying that, because this has been a dream job my entire life. And with this simple law being passed, it's ruined everything.
All right, well, Commissioner Keely?
I certainly understand what Commissioner Gross is saying about setting a precedent. But, and this is the third time, but this is a direct result of an emergency situation. And he is between a rock and a hard place. And I guess I personally would like to see us waive these with the understanding that this is the last time.
I guess my question would be, I'm not asking to not have to pay my taxes, just if I can have an extension without late fees, as I'm being forced to do for my tenants? I mean, that's, that's all I'm asking for is just some time, so the places that say they can, that they will pay me to pay me. And, I mean, it's a government program, so I can't make them hurry up, and I can't charge them late fees. I just, I don't see how I can be charged late fees, having to wait for them to pay me.
And that, and that-
And I, hey, what? I'm sorry.
No, I think that represents the overall problem that, that we have as a county, because, and this goes to what I had mentioned earlier, that, you know, I, the inventory that we would have of landlords in this county, if, you know, if we waive this, we're gonna, we could potentially have every landowner suggesting, well, I'm not going to pay my taxes either, and I'm gonna, because, you know, because if I'm going to have my penalties waived, this, we didn't create this problem at the county level. We didn't create this. It's based on, you know, I think this, the assistance on these things needs to come from those who implemented the, the issue. And I, and I'm not saying that that was wrong with what, with what they did or not. That's not, that's not the argument here. It's just that-
Yeah, they should give the assistance taken care of back to Lakes and Prairie, because Lakes and Prairie handled it extremely efficiently. Ever since Rent Help MN took over, it's impossible, and there's no one to even contact. I, I mean, I've had tenants that have been approved forever, and no word from anyone, and I, I mean-
Well, I think there needs to be some follow-up.
I don't see how it's my fault. I didn't create the problem either. And I'm following all the rules and doing everything I'm told.
All right.
In light of what I've heard so far, and I don't think this is the proper avenue for this, and I make a motion to deny.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger, to deny the request as it's probably not anything that falls under our reasoning for it, so. Any further discussion on the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign?
Nay.
We have nay, and, okay.
It has to be same sign.
The same sign, yeah, yeah. Okay, so we have, that motion is denied four to one. Okay, we wish you luck, and, and, you know, we can maybe follow up and help you in some contacts with the proper people, whether it's the collaborative or whoever, to try to help get those rent, rental payments that have been approved to you, and get rid of that bottleneck that Commissioner Mojo talked about. So, thank you.
I would appreciate any help, any help you can give me, I would appreciate.
All right, we will, we'll have our administration follow up with you. Okay, we'll continue on, we're extremely late in our meeting here. Frank, do you want to, Commissioner?
Yeah, Tuesday, we had PIC meeting, and all three items that we discussed at PIC were on the agenda today, so it's no use going into them. I was at the Solid Ways Ceremony, that's been covered. Tended some nights to unite. That was all on Tuesday. Monday, I zoomed in on the Dillwood City Council meeting, and then I went to Felton City Council meeting and discussed mostly recycling up there. That's my report.
All right. Last Tuesday, we had a PIC meeting, and again, the three items have been fully talked about today in our meeting. Groundbreaking has been well discussed. Yesterday, the ninth, we had a transfer station construction meeting, and I think the city building permit will probably be ready by tomorrow. We did have several other topics of concerns related to project costs, the dealings with the 15th Avenue and the line extension, and, and we will be continuing those. And I do want to thank Jeannie from the MPCA who attended in person, that, I thought that was good, and she's going to work with us in establishing what needs to be done to finalize that grant agreement. So, so it was nice for her to be there. And then, as Commissioner Ebinger mentioned, we did have a special meeting of the diversion authority board, and it was one more step closer to the, on the project agreement with the P3 contractor. And I think it was the financial close is going to be, the financial close is going to be in October, and that is the final step, and then they are free to go on, on, on. This one allowed them to start their design and everything, I believe, is what we approved
It was a requirement from the financial-
Right.
-entities of this, that we get this far and this committed, so that they can go ahead and finish the financial end of it.
And that concludes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, had follow-up conversations with Robert Wilson on the RFQ process for the Triple RDC. They did select five, five architect firms to interview on the 17th and 18th of this month. Commissioner Ebinger and I believe Sheriff Empteen are going to be participating in the interview panel, full, people from our region. I participated in the groundbreaking ceremony also, that's been addressed. We had pre-budget meetings for Social Services. Kathy McKay, just some discussions with the COVID, and also they did submit the detox grant last week. We worked with Mike Breathhorse, Becker County, on some questions he had with the juvenile center. Yesterday, participated in the AMC work group on the opioid settlements with county administrators from Freeborn, Candy, Ojai County, Murray County, and Blue Earth. AAMC has been meeting with the Attorney General's Office to discuss, I guess, with the settlement of Purdue opioids lawsuit, whether or not the AG's office will be joining, dropping their lawsuit and joining that lawsuit, and what are those impacts for the state? And so we'll, they'll continue to meet with the Attorney's General's Office, and we'll continue to receive updates and give feedback on, again, wanting to hope to keep as much of those dollars local as we can. Just two other quick things, we do, we did receive a notification from MCIT on our dividend. We, we had a dividend, the total dividend for MCIT was roughly $12 million for 2021. Clay County's portion of that was $201,385. They had a different formula that they were going to be utilizing this year, and so our initial belief was we were going to see a lower dollar amount than that. And so in the budget, we had about $100,000 in there. So, so the benefit there is we had about an additional $101,000 to potentially offset the levy. Last thing that I wanted to address is we do have a live auction, or an auction today for the Riverton, Riverton property that we've discussed in detail at this board. It's going to be here in this room at 2:00 PM today. And so that concludes my report.
Thank you. I hope we have nothing else to talk about. We're adjourned.